Good morning, colleagues. We do have an agenda before us. Today is December 11, 2025, and roll call has been happening, but I know there has been many small caucuses that have been happening since this morning. So colleagues, our roll call is open. And staff, is that updated? Okay, so confirmation from staff here in the chambers, we do have 13 members that answered roll call, so that does constitute a quorum colleagues, and we will call our NABKIA Committee meeting into order at 10:43 a.m. And Delegate Ness, Dr. Andy Ness, may you provide our invocation this morning? Thank you Delegate Dr. Andy Ness for invocation this morning. That prayer, and colleagues will move down to number two. And just for roll call purposes, we do have several excuse absences due to government-to-government discussions, either at this, most of them are all at the state level, so, and also medical emergencies. So just for the record here, and then we'll go down to number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. I do see Ms. Kretasha all the way from INTECH. Thank you for being here. Although she yajilto, Mr. Terry Dayish from APS is also here with us, and also all of our LDAs and staff, FRF staff. I saw earlier Lisa Jim, Ryan, so thank you for being here. Although, Shadella Theresa Galvin, all the way from IHS headquarters, thank you for being here too. And stop, since there's none, we'll move on to number three, if you could read our proposed agenda into the record.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the NABKIA Committee. This is the proposed agenda of the regular meeting, December 11, 2025, 10 a.m., Presiding Chair Honorable Chris Lynn Curly, Speaker of the 25th Navo Nation Council. One, call meeting to order, roll call invocation. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Two minutes limit per delegate. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals. There are two journals dated November 13 and November 25, 25, 2025. Five, receive reports. A, report regarding the Natani Development Corporation. B, report providing an update on current operations, progress, and relevant developments regarding Sections 3 and 11 of CJN-29-22. C, report from President Boo, Dr. Boo Nigren, regarding fiduciary responsibilities and ARPA funding to assist the Navo people with hardship payments. Six, old business fund. Seven, new business. Item A, Legislation 0253-25. Eight, close of meeting announcements adjournment. Madam Speaker.
All right, thank you, staff. And also just for the record, our advisor did say that there's also no pending legislations that don't have to be added today. So just for the record, so there is just one legislation that is posted. And then we'll call for a motion, motion by Delegate Tolt, second, second by Chair Parrish. First in queue for questions on the agenda, Delegate Dr. Andy Ness.
Yes, thank you, Speaker, again, and good morning, colleagues, everyone. So I want to propose amendment number one to the legis, uh, excuse me, to the agenda we have before us. Colleagues, if I can request seven, a new business to act on Legislation 253-25 before reports, but also included in my motion is to consent that particular legislation as well, 253-25. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Delegate Dr. Andy Ness, and that is to move first, new business before reports. So new business would be new number five, and then also adding seven, or new business A 0253-25 onto a consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Chair Parrish. I believe Delegate Law, this is, you're going to speak on the main motion, or amendment number one? Okay, amendment number one, Delegate Law.
And thank you, Shitile, Jono E, Todezen. I appreciate you saying the prayer this morning. And then I also wanted to ask for amendment one, if we can also include on to our agenda, receiving reports. We did have the Navo Nation Ethics and Rules Office that was supposed to give a report, so I'm asking Honorable Doctor Ness if we can add that to our reports as well under item D. So if I could also request that. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Law, and we do have concurrence from Delegate Ness. So that motion for amendment number one is being modified, and it is to add a report from the Ethics and Rules Office. Comments, questions on amendment number one, colleagues? I don't see none. Two minutes on the board to vote on amendment number one. Hi, thank you, colleagues. We do have a vote of 11 favors, zero opposed with turnout voting, and that is on a two-committee rule. Going back to our main motion. Going twice, we'll call for a vote to adopt our agenda today. Two minutes on the board, colleagues, says on the main motion. Two minutes on the board, colleagues, since on the main motion. We do have two, November 13, 2025, and November 25, 2025. Uh, both journals were sent, uh, yesterday, uh, December 10th at 4:30 p.m. Motion? Motion by Delegate Cheryl and Yazi, second. Second by Delegate Stephen Arvizo. I don't see any questions or comments, and we'll put two minutes on the board to vote on our journals. And we do have a, the full vote here from the floor. We do have a vote of 12 in favor, zero opposed, with chair not voting. Thank you, colleagues, uh, we have adopted our agenda for today. Uh, we'll move on to number four, review and adopt the journals. We do have two, November 13, 2025, and November 25, 2025. Uh, both journals were sent, uh, yesterday, uh, December 10th at 4:30 p.m. Motion? Motion by Delegate Cheryl and Yazi, second. Second by Delegate Stephen Arvizo. I don't see any questions or comments, and we'll put two minutes on the board to vote on our journals. We do have a vote of 12 in favor, zero opposed, with chair not voting. Thank you, colleagues, for accepting the journals. And then moving on to new, uh, new number, number five is new business, and that is a consent agenda 0253 dash 25 is the only legislation, uh, that is on the consent agenda. And staff, if you could help read our consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item A, consent agenda, legislation 0253 dash 25, in action relating to the Health Education and Human Services Law and Order, NABOK EAT Committees and the Navajo Nation Council, amending the Navajo Nation Code Title 10, Chapter 1, Subchapter 2, Section 106, to reduce the number of Navajo Nation Board of Education members. Prime sponsor is Honorable Vince R. James, co-sponsor, Honorable Andy Nez. This legislation is final authority with Navajo Nation Council. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, staff, is there a motion? Motion by Delegate Tolth, is there a second? Second by Chair Brenda Jesus. And colleagues, this is a consent agenda, so we will go straight into the vote. We do have a vote of 12 in favor, zero opposed, uh, with chair not voting. So thank you, colleagues, and that legislation will move forward to Navajo Nation Council. And number six will be now receiving reports. Uh, we do have A, uh, report regarding the Nahtani Development Corporation. We do have presenters that are identified on our agenda as Mr. Delmar Blackhorse, Chairman of NDC Board. Mr. Blackhorse, are you the only representative here today for NDC?
Yes.
Okay. All right, or just double checking to see if anyone else is joining online or here in person with you. And colleagues, uh, we will, uh, first hear the report, and then we'll open up for questions and comments with the motion in a second. So Mr. Blackhorse, you will have 20 minutes for your report.
Awesome, thank you. All right, first off, I want to thank all of you guys for taking the time to, um, be here. Um, everyone in the audience, uh, everyone watching from home, takes, uh, a little bit out of your day to sit here and watch a council session, so I appreciate the time you've taken to give me an opportunity to report to you. Shee Delmar Blackhorse Ineshe, Deish Chitni Inesle, Bim Thwotni Bashechin, Kentsle Chitni Dashachay, Hashk Onzo Dashonale. I am, uh, originally from Utah. Uh, I'm from a small town called Monizuma Creek, Utah. I grew up, uh, in Chinlea, Arizona, went to high school, or went to high school, junior high, elementary there. Um, I like to credit, um, the Office of Danae Youth for being my first, uh, actual job experience, so worked there at the Chinlea office for a bit. And I even, uh, interned here at the, uh, Office of Legislative Services under, uh, Tom Platero, back when he was leading the organization. I did, uh, some work with, um, the BNF Committee, um, back when, uh, Speaker, uh, when Bates was on the BNF Committee, and, uh, I got to know Peggy Nakay and, um, Ramona really well. So it's a little bit different being here in this seat, because usually, um, when I first showed up here, I tried to walk in through the back, because I was so used to delivering things to, um, the, the staff here. So, a little bit different of, of an experience, but just to give you a little bit of background about who I am, where I'm from, um, educational background, I have a degree in, uh, economics, uh, went to Arizona State University for, uh, my bachelor's, uh, have an MBA, uh, minor in recreational management, um, I've been working for a 100% Navajo, uh, Navajo-owned and staffed financial investment advisory firm, um, Tall Salt Advisors. Um, I've been a registered investment advisor for the past, uh, five years, so, um, a fiduciary, uh, been working with tribes my whole career, so, I am the, uh, the, the, the current, uh, Board Chair for the Nahtani Development Corporation. And for those of you guys that don't know, um, Nahtani is the nation's Section 17 corporation, federally chartered, and, uh, what that means to you guys is, um, it's probably the best entity to conduct business on behalf of Navajo, because NDC carries around Navajo's, um, tax exemptions and the tax benefits that come with being Navajo, and we carry that in every, uh, business dealing that we're doing. So, a good way to think about it, and the way I've explained it in the past, is we are the nation's holding company. So, um, in, in terms of, um, establishing an identity and trying to define what NDC is, NDC, it can pretty much, uh, go into any business venture that, uh, the nation wants it to. So it was important to me to get in front of, uh, the council, just to give an update and, um, provide you guys with, uh, some of the, uh, progress, progress made since my appointment to the board, which is, uh, about a year ago now. Um, just a little bit of background, um, NDC was established in 2018. At that time, there was a capital infusion of about $2.5 million that was, uh, given or invested into the Navajo. It's my understanding that those funds, um, came from the Navajo Nation Sales Tax Fund. So I know there's some questions about that, and I know that you guys have been, um, I know that the council has been asking, uh, to hear a little bit of more, more information about that. So, a little bit about NDC, 2018 was when it was established, the original board was appointed around that time. The original board, or the prior board of NDC, was dismissed in, uh, March of 2024, and there was a joint press release issued by, um, the, um, the President's Office and this council. Um, since then, um, there was a six-month period where there was a vetting process to select the new board. I was appointed in December of 2024, so as of this date, I've been here for about a year. So over the course of this year, um, NDC has had to do a little bit of cleanup in terms of some, um, legal, uh, legal issues that were, uh, presented to me, um, due to the prior boards, um, I, I would say unwillingness to, um, abide by the dismissal from this council and the executive branch. Currently, um, there is a pending legal investigation going on with the Department of Justice, so I'm just letting that play out. In terms of, um, where NDC is at now, um, I've just been letting the lawyers do, um, their investigation, assisting any way that I can. Um, at the moment, I do not have access to one of NDC's bank accounts, and I do not have access to, um, the audits, the historical audits for NDC. NDC does have, um, audits going back to 2019. I reached out to the firm that completed those audits, and, uh, they won't provide me with that information, because I'm not the person that they made the contract with. And, um, outside of issuing a subpoena to them, I can't, uh, force them to give me those, uh, those documents. I was able to, um, get ahold of one of NDC's bank accounts, and that was the Washington Federal Bank Account. From there, I was able to pull all the historical bank statements, and I was able to, um, just, uh, do a little bit of, uh, light accounting, and account for where that $2.5 million went. So in the, uh, document that was shared with you all, you'll see that there is a, a, a table that breaks down where those expenses went. So if you guys need a more, um, in-depth, uh, presentation on those expenses, I can definitely give that to you. Um, I can even share the bank statements if you'd like. Obviously, I didn't want to do that, given this is a public forum, and I really don't want to disclose all of NDC's, um, financial, fi, uh, finances, uh, in a public area. But, uh, a little bit about that, so that process is going on, um, spent the past year kind of just cleaning up messes. A lot of you guys might ask yourself why it took so long for me to come, uh, in front of council, but, uh, I come from the school of thought of, you clean up your mess, and then you come, um, present, so I was just in the, uh, process of cleaning up, uh, the mess that I was left with. Right now, NDC is currently just moving forward, evaluating different business options, different business opportunities on behalf of Navajo. One thing that you'll know about me and the way I differentiate myself from the rest of the enterprises or the, uh, the entities that might present, uh, present to Navajo, is that, um, w- we have a clean slate, um, for you guys. I don't have a track record with any of you besides maybe meeting and passing, so I'm just trying to change that. And one thing that I've been trying to communicate to everyone that I've come across is NDC's doors are open to any of you guys. If you guys have a, a business dealing or anything you want me to look at, just, just let NDC know. Um, one thing that, um, NDC has been really good at doing is just due diligence work. I did some due diligence work for, um, the Division of, uh, E- Economic Development. So, um, yeah, a little bit about that. A little bit more about my background and my qualifications to lead NDC, uh, back in 2022, uh, my firm, um, Tall Salt, we led the Artisan and Small Business Grant Program. We went through two, um, audit rounds, and there were no findings, got to meet with KPMG twice. The only reason why there was two is because that program went between two fiscal years. So like I said, both times didn't, um, find any audits. We were able to disburse, uh, $8.7 million to artisans and Navajo small businesses within a, uh, four-month period, and I believe one of the, uh, contributors to that program is actually sitting in the audience, so it's just pretty awesome. Um, yeah, I just want to keep it short and sweet, I don't know.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Blackhorse, and colleague, and colleagues, for the report that was submitted. You should have received that in your email yesterday at 9:43 a.m. And we will open up the floor for questions and comments, uh, but first, motion? Motion by Chair Ricky Nez, second by Chair Brenda Jesus. Calling for questions and comments. Chair Parrish.
Thank you, Speaker Curly. Uh, good morning to my colleagues here at the NABOK EAT Committee, and welcome, Mr. Delmar, thank you for coming, uh, before the committee today. My question about the enterprise, um, could you update the committee on who currently sits on the board and their qualifications? I understand that they're appointed, but I'd like to know more about the board members. Thank you, Speaker. Oh, I don't reserve my time, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Parrish, and then going back to Mr. Blackhorse.
Thank you for that, uh, question. Uh, the rest of the board was, uh, appointed by, uh, the, the shareholder representatives. The board consists of Quincy Bonate, he is, uh, I would say his specialty is accounting, been working for, um, he worked under the speaker with the, no, not the speaker, he worked with the, uh, current controller, um, Sean McCabe, advised by him. Another member of the board is, uh, Pawi Rivera, Rivera, uh, he was, uh, on the, he was a, his background is serving at, in one of the cabinets, uh, under President, uh, Joe Biden. Um, another board member is William Draper, his specialty is, uh, architecture and, um, construction management. And the last board member is Jacqueline Ahastin, and she is, um, she is a entrepreneur, small business owner, and she gives, lends her, um, insight into those matters. We're currently looking for two more board members to fill out our board, so. Uh, and, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Blackhorse, and going back for follow-up question, Chair Parrish.
Uh, thank you, Speaker, uh, thank you, Mr. Delmar. Uh, back to the board, it's important that, uh, we know the, I know you gave us a brief understanding of what those qualifications may be. Uh, could you elaborate a little bit more on Mr. Pawi, I forgot his last name, uh, that board member's background? You said that they're, they served under the Biden administration, um, but I don't know how just serving under a presidential administration is enough to be a board member. I do know that our speaker opposed that, uh, that appointment, so I, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, thank you.
Mr. Blackhorse.
So Pawi Rivera, um, he's educated, uh, went to school back east, and, uh, I, I know that he has his bachelor's degree. Um, he has very, he has a deep wealth of knowledge in terms of like his, uh, political ties back to Washington. What I can tell you about him is he's a very well-versed in the mechanics of, um, maneuvering through the federal system. He's been a great asset in terms of, uh, scoring meetings with, uh, people from the, um, Department of Health. He's been a great asset in trying to revive the Molina Healthcare Deal. He's been a great asset in trying to revive the Molina Healthcare Deal due to his contacts with representatives from New Mexico. And he just overall provides a good insight into the plumbing of how policy works. I would say he's more of our policy expert. Thank you. And, yeah, and if it, if it pleases you guys, I can have them come here. The only reason why I didn't have them present to you all is because we have a very limited budget. And for them to travel here, I believe he lives back east, it'd be, NDC would have to pay for his flight mileage, get him to, to get him here. And right now, we don't have the operating capital to send our whole board here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackhorse, for those responses. And then going back to Q, we do have next Delegate Shana Anlaw.
Good morning, Mr. Blackhorse, and thank you for your introduction, and thank you for acknowledging where you started with the youth and also with Chin Lee. So I do have a few questions here. One is that I want to go ahead and circle back to what Chair Parrish mentioned with this Pawe Rivera. So I do have questions regarding his involvement with different corporations and organizations that are affiliated with Navajo Nation. And there have been some business transactions that have gone sour with the Navajo Nation. And I want to know, how do you conduct background investigations or clearances of conflicts of interest for your board members? And is that even taken into account? The other question I have is, as you mentioned, that finances are pretty slim right now. So what, as board members, do you receive as your stipend payments? And how often do you meet? The third question I have is in regards to what you mentioned, that you do have meetings, and if there are already contacts being made out to the federal partners or even Washington D.C., what types of projects do you have lined up? And how are you communicating that to the Navajo Nation Council? And I feel those are all important. As being a member of the RDC Committee, we have been holding our enterprises to high standards of communication, and we rely on them to give information back to our committee so that we can ensure that they are following their plan of operations and what they were created for, which is to give back revenue to the Navajo Nation. So if you could summarize what Nantani Development Corporation was really created for, how do you envision fulfilling that goal and giving back to the Navajo Nation? So that, Speaker, I'll go ahead and yield the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Law, and going back to Mr. Blackhorse.
All right, so going back to how we, background checks. So before we were appointed to the board, there was a background check that we had to submit to. So what that included was just requiring us to consent to give our, first to run the background check and then to pull our credit. So those were some of the determining factors that went into the appointment to our positions on the board. As far as Pawe, I can't speak to all the business ventures that he's been involved in. He's the newest member of our board, and he joined the board back in, I believe, June. So in terms of really understanding the, the, the things that he's been involved in, we haven't had that conversation. But I want to assure you that background checks have been run on the prior board or the previous, the current board. And also, in our charter, it states that the board members can't interact or engage in business that is of conflict or that we have a personal gain in. So that's written into our charter as well. So if, that's sort of like a fail-safe in terms of making sure that we're always doing, conducting business in the correct manner. As far as communicating with council and meeting with federal partners, a lot of the support initially that NDC has received has been from the division directors. I don't know exactly why that is, but they've been more receptive in terms of using NDC as a resource. So a lot of the meetings that have been conducted have been in collaboration with the executive directors. So in terms of reporting back to council, there, there's never been any solid footing in terms of a project that is going to be delivered or like a business venture that will be acted upon. And in terms of just delivering and communicating with you, I'm still learning how you guys like to communicate. I will say, one of the mistakes that I made was not keeping council informed of what I'm doing and what NDC is doing, and I intend to correct that because it's almost like going to your boss for every little thing. I thought that it would be bothersome to come to you guys with every little thing that I'm doing, but now that I've understood exactly how some of you guys like the information to be communicated and delivered, I'll do a better job at making sure that I correctly communicate with you guys and make sure that you're always in the loop. So please understand that I, I serve at the leisure of the Navajo Nation. I see you guys as the oversight, and the, the one shareholder for NDC is the Navajo Nation. And honestly, I am in a little bit of a difficult position because I do need both sides of the street to work together in order to collaborate and continue to push product, push, push things forward. I think that it's, I don't want to be seen as playing favorites with either side of the street. So I've been trying to do a good job of siloing different directors and just trying to communicate what we're trying to accomplish at NDC with the council. In terms of, you asked about compensation. So the board has a board salary of $25,000. So given our financial constraints, the board elected to reduce that salary by 60%. So they only, the board and myself only collect $10,000 annually, and that's on a quarterly basis, and that's if the funds are available. So right now, none of the board members are getting paid because there's not enough cash to justify paying yourself before continuing on all the business ventures that we've been evaluating. So when I absorbed NDC, we absorbed a bank account that had $60,000. I would say about 80% of that has gone to legal fees, and, and that's just because there were some things that needed to be conducted before we actually went out there and started doing business. So when I took over NDC, we didn't even have a valid business certificate here on the nation. So I had to go here, come to the nation, and make sure that we were up to date with our taxes. Everything was correct with the Navajo Nation Business Regulatory Department. So that, that was one of the tasks that I had to do. Let me see, what else did you ask? Background, oh. And in terms of where NDC is going and where it fits within the nation, the board is committed to giving a dividend back to the nation. So we were talking about, we're committed to 20%, of our profit. The reason why is because if NDC is seen as the driver of economic development for the nation, obviously, you'll give us more projects, which means the shareholder, which is the only, which is the nation, will get its money back. I, I don't have any issues with giving the nation back a dividend, even if, I mean, there's no issue here. I'm fully committed to doing that. One thing that I wanted to do is, one thing that the board wanted to accomplish with NDC is changing the way Navajo does business with outside entities and non-native partners because a lot of, a lot of the projects that cross my desk, they're, they're, they're non-starters because you have this idea that Navajo is going to be taken advantage of in terms of the way that business was handled in the past. And so that's what I'm trying to do is just realign that narrative, restate that narrative because I, I just want to do good projects, generate revenue for the nation, and leave this enterprise in a better state than it was left for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackhorse, and then we'll go back to questions. Next, we do have Delegate Cheryl Nialcy.
Good morning, everybody. I hope you're safe and well. Happy holidays to those that are listening online. And thank you for sending your report to us yesterday. I did have some time to look at it, and, and it does provide an optimistic narrative and, you know, there's, but I'm still seeing several major gaps in it. Some of the things that I want to know about is the status of, in the unaccounted $2.5 million and what kind of legal exposure it, it brings to the, the Navajo Nation and to the entity, to the enterprise. And I want to know about the investigative, the delays, what's causing that? So in your report, so the $2.5 million was transferred to NDC in 2018, but only 60,000 of it was found in this account. The U.S. bank account remains frozen, and the new board does not know the balance. That's what's in your, your report that you sent out yesterday. And the other thing you're mentioning is an outside investigator has not provided updates. So this means we still do not have an accounting of the Navajo Nation money. Financial statements are incomplete and unaudited, and the, again, the new board does not have control of all the corporate assets. And this is a major red flag for compliance. And I just saw in our email that we have gotten a copy of the legislation, I guess, that brought NDC into this existence. I want to know about what is the exact balance of the frozen U.S. bank account, and what is the status of the outside investigation and who is overseeing it? Why have the investigators not responded for months? And when will a full forensic audit be completed? Does NDC have an updated governance charter and bylaws? And why is the board considering appointing its attorney as an interim CEO? Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Yalzy, and then we'll go back to Mr. Blackhorse.
Okay, so I think in the exhibit table, there's a breakdown of where the $2.5 million went. In one of the lines, you'll see that there is Washington Federal Bank Account that has about $3,000 in it. So that's what we have left over out of that $60,000 that we absorbed when we first got control of the Washington Federal Account. The last time that I saw any information about the U.S. bank account had about $175,000 in there. These bank accounts were brought to my attention because I had our legal team pull information using NDC's tax ID number. So I was able to identify two separate bank accounts. The, the biggest issue and what prompted an investigation was that the prior board was still paying themselves a board salary despite being dismissed back in March of 2024. So once that I saw that was happening, I made sure that I got rid of their access to the Washington Federal Account. The way that I've seen the U.S. bank account used is it's almost as if it's, it's feeding the Washington Federal Account. So as operating expenses arose, the prior board would put money, transfer money from the U.S. bank account into the Washington Federal Bank Account. I do have historical bank statements that show when cash is infused or when cash was transferred over or deposited withdrawn. So that's how I was able to produce that table that you see in the, I believe it's an exhibit or an appendix. Let's see, that was, oh, and then as far as a legal exposure, there's no legal exposure at, because there was no business that was conducted using NDC from the prior board. From my understanding and from what the bank statements tell me, is a lot of their operating capital was burned on the due diligence resulting from the Molina Healthcare Deal. So that's where a majority of those funds went. When the deal didn't happen, there was no place to replace or replenish that revenue. And so they basically put, it, it seems as if they might have put all their eggs in that basket, and when it didn't come to fruition, they, there was no way to recoup any of those lost expenses. Let's see, the status of the outside investigator. So the outside investigator was hired by the Navajo Nation Department of Justice. So in terms of being able to impose any influence over that investigator, not on myself, the board, we don't have any authority, authority to tell that investigator to hurry up or provide us with information because that investigator is contracted by the Navajo Nation Department of Justice. So in terms of making that investigator more amenable to certain timelines, it's been difficult to do that. Let's see, full forensic, a full forensic audit. If, if, it could be done, but what it would take is obviously cash that NDC doesn't have at the moment. But in terms of expenses, just looking at the bank statements and waiting for the results from the investigator, I don't, I wouldn't recommend doing a full forensic audit until that plays out. So at that point, if there are any questionable findings, I would recommend it and pull it and put it in front of the board. And I think there was update. I think that was, if, if there was, if there's a question that I missed, please let me know. I, I, there's four questions there, so I wrote down the last one, and it's a little bit of chicken scratch, so I can't read it. So if, if there's another question, please feel free to ask it again.
I think you, the two extra questions that I had asked were, does NDC have an updated governance charter and bylaws? And the other one was, why is the board appointing its attorney as an interim CEO? Those are the two extra questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Yalzy, and then we'll go back to Mr. Blackhorse.
Okay, great questions. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to make you restate your question. NDC does not have an updated charter, and the reason for that is to amend the charter. You'd have to go back to the feds and have them weigh in on that. NDC was a federally chartered Section 17 corporation, so, and, and there's been no need to update the charter. As far as the bylaws, the bylaws have not been updated, but the, the bylaws mirror the charter. So we can update the charter or the, the bylaws, but we haven't chosen to do so. And as far as the board appointing the, the lawyer as a CEO, I, I thought I asked him to remove that bullet point. It was a discussion, but obviously, nothing has been seriously considered. The only thing that was seriously talked about and considered is temporarily allowing, at least for a three-month period, allowing myself to absorb the CEO role, just in terms of coming in front of council and asking for some capital. But once that three-month period would end, would be that, that But once that three-month period would end, would be, that period of being CEO would be effectively dismissed. But as far as getting a CEO, it's very difficult right now in the position that I am because people need to be paid compensated for their, for their services. And it's hard for me to sell someone on the idea of like, yes, we'll get you paid. I just can't tell you when you're going to get paid because NDC doesn't have the capital right now to pay you. And as soon as we get recapitalized, that's the first thing that we're going to do is go out and find a CEO. So in terms of the recapitalization plan, like I said, I'm not coming to ask you guys for money now. It'll be down the road, but it'll be for cash flowing assets. And we can talk about that maybe after this. But in terms of going back to your questions, NDC does not have an updated charter or bylaws. And NDC is not seriously considering appointing its legal as CEO. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackhorse, and we'll go back to follow-up questions by Delegate Law.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And then thank you for your response. So I want to go ahead and talk about, you mentioned operating on the deal of Molina. And there are several things that I want to just bring to light here, one of which is I want the public to know that on here, we have a balance sheet which was dated from historical expense 2019 to October 2025. The deposits were $2,502,800. And out of that, the prior board's salary was $1,043,750. So in essence, this board took 41.7% out of the 2 million, which is very sad. These individuals, and I do see these individuals quite often, and they rant and rave about transparency and helping the people. But yet, you know, in black and white, we can clearly see their intentions were not there for the people. And the whole intent of creating this enterprise was to generate revenue back for the Navajo Nation. And now you're stating here, you know, the total left is $3,158. At what point does this council have to take action to where we may have to shut down an enterprise? Because at this point, we will have no money in the future to give money to enterprises. And if you are saying that, you know, right now, you don't have, well, you recently completed the certificate to operate on the Navajo Nation. You know, that baffles me to think how the previous council, previous leadership, did not even follow the Navajo Nation laws to begin with. And here we are, cleaning up another mess. One of the things that you did mention as far as Molina is although you say that you're trying to work with both sides of the street, it is very clear to see who is in the driver's seat. It is the division directors. It is the Department of Health, and it is Children and Family Services. We know the two division directors who oftentimes come before this council, who are always here because they are, you know, advocating for projects that benefit their family and friends. And this Powi Riviera has a personal friendship with President Boo Nigron. And that's a conflict of interests. So I think, you know, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like this enterprise is going to be targeted to be the money laundering machine for the OPVP. And if I can see that, then the whole Navajo Nation can. And so for me, as a member, just one member of this council, my recommendation is to dismantle Notani Development Corporation and perhaps entertain looking at how these division directors are working with outside companies. Because Molina, there's different partners. We've heard the name George Cordova over and over again. These names reappear when we're talking about ZENI, IDSA, the Wells, I don't know, Wells Springs Treatment Center. These are properties that are being bought up by the Navajo Nation. And where is the Department of Justice in all of this? To me, Department of Justice is doing a complete cover-up of all of the atrocities of how our Navajo Nation is taking advantage of the people. And they are not red-flagging any procurement, any business transactions, and any of these contracts. And it's very, very sad that it has infiltrated even into our enterprises. So I just want to express my concern at this time. I don't really have any other questions because I know you just inherited the problem. And, you know, I appreciate you wanting to make a difference. But I think this is a sinking ship that we cannot save. And that's just my own personal opinion. So with that, Speaker, I'll yield the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Law, for those questions. And now I'll go back to Mr. Blackhorse.
All right, well, thank you for that insight. I would, I mean, it's different being in this seat, I will tell you that. I told myself, once I survived a hostile chapter meeting, I can probably survive in any room that I walk into. And I will say, just give it a chance. Because you don't know me, I get that, I'm new to you. And I can tell you right now, a little bit about myself. You can ask some, one of the tribal colleges that I've managed money for, for the past 10 years. They can tell you that I've never, I've done everything above board. I manage $70 million of a certain assets for native individuals. I represent nonprofits in advising them what to do with their scholarship funds. I've never taken money from, I've never done transacted business in any unethical manner. And that's what you'll understand about me, is I'm trying to guide this, we'll call, it's called an entity. The legal terms, it's sort of like an enterprise. But I will tell you that I'm a little bit more business savvy than a lot of the people that have probably been at the head of this organization. Everything I do goes through thorough background checks. I had to dissolve a business relationship due to findings of a background check. So I'm not afraid to dissolve businesses, and no one really tells me what to do. So the idea of division directors being able to point my head a certain direction, that might have been the case because, for maybe the first month, because they were the only Navajo Nation officials that were reaching out to offer some sort of assistance. So when you're, when you're in a pool or a body of water and someone throws you a lifeline, it's kind of like you just want a little bit of assistance. As I've grown into this position, this board and myself have dictated what we want to be involved in. And so some of the projects that I'm involved in is what I will define as repatriating a hotel, a cash-flowing hotel property in your area. The reason why I want to do that and why it's important to me is because I don't want non-native facilitators benefiting within Navajo. It's very important to me to repatriate those funds and be able to dictate where jobs are created, dictate the investment into employees because I'll be able to raise people, like some of those employees, up to positions that they may not have been given the opportunity due to some outside party being interested in it. Another project that I'm, want to bring to you is the investment into a Navajo software company. So when you talk about trying to do something for Navajo or investing in Navajo, that's what NDC is trying to do. This service as a software company is essentially a hotel booking software. And for me, what I see as the potential there is a passive way to generate funds, not just in Navajo, but in different tribal nations. So imagine this Navajo software company. It doesn't say Navajo on it, it's just a Navajo owner. Navajo would be owner of this company. Imagine them going to Cherokee and managing, and Cherokee hiring them for their services. And now you have a Navajo company in Cherokee, partially owned by Navajo, generating money off of different tribes. And it's not, it's like passive way to generate revenue. Also, I'm going to come back to you guys for a minority ownership, to buy a minority ownership stake in a professional sports team. It's not cash flowing, I'm not going to lie to you. I'm not going to say, hey, it's going to make us rich. But what it does is it establishes a track record to show that Navajo has the ability to be a good owner. So then we get invited to different sports teams. But more importantly, what I see is the ability to join the real estate development of these teams. Because these teams need to build new facilities, they need to build out new arenas. If Navajo can get in on the opportunity to invest in some of these things, why not go out and facilitate that? I know that this enterprise has kind of had a bad track record. And I mean, I'll take accountability for other people's mistakes. But what I, what I've asked chapters and what I've asked people is just to give it a shot. And you did mention the Department of Health. And the reason why I got involved in the project over at the Department of Health is to make sure that Navajo benefits from that project. I could tell you offline that when I got there, there was a non-native enterprise trying to gain control over land, which would effectively make sure that they facilitate the development of that project. I would not do that because there's no reason for outside entities, non-native entities, non-Navajo entities to benefit off of projects that are Navajo. I've, my firm, Tall Salt Advisors, we've been compliant with the NBOA for, I believe, the past 10 years. We pay our taxes, we give back to Navajo in any way we can. So I know that in NDC's role, I don't have a huge track record. But if you would just ask people about Tall Salt and the work that I've done as an individual, and you'll see that I'm not, I'm not unethical. And I have what's called a CRD number, which was given to me by FINRA. You can even look at that. That's what allows me to offer, legally offer, investment advice. And my CRD number, you can pull me up, and you'll see exactly my record there. So thank you, I do appreciate the comment, and I do understand where it's coming from. And thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Blackhorse, for those responses. Follow-up questions by Delegate Law. So next, I'm going to go to Delegate Dr. Andy Ness, and then we'll follow by Chair Brenda Jesus. Delegate Ness.
Thank you, Speaker, and thank you, Mr. Blackhorse, as well, for the presentation. So based, as you can tell and as you're learning here, there's just unveiling of concerns as well as additional questions. And just hearing your responses regarding the communication, the viable assessments, and then reporting back to this committee, then my interest is a timeline, a projected timeline, on when we can actually hear a full, comprehensive report. I understand just after reading the report as well, there are, as Delegate Yalzy mentioned, some gaps, some unreporting. But I think it would just be more beneficial for this committee to hear a much more comprehensive report. I know maybe some things are just not in your purview, or you may not be able to receive the information that you're requesting. But I think with what is occurring and what you're presenting now, and it sounds like there's more to this report that has actually been shared in the actual document. So my question is just, when can this committee hear a much more comprehensive report? Some of those projected timelines. And I don't know if the board is actually meeting, considering you don't have funds for your stipends, et cetera. Myself, I always just feel, you know, the work continues regardless. And if it's something that you're projecting in the future, then I would assume something like that is at the priority for yourself as well as the rest of the board members. So that's my main question right now, considering what has been presented, both in the document and what you're sharing as, as far as responses to what my colleagues are addressing. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate Ness. And next, we do have Chair Jesus.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and then to colleagues of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Blackhorse, I almost called you Blackwater, Blackhorse, for providing this information here to N'aukia Tiet in regards to Notani Development Corporation. So as I read, I'm reading here the Plan of Operation for Notani Development Corporation. You had mentioned that you currently have several board members, and you're also in search of, I believe, two more or three more. And if you can share the information on, because I understand it's supposed to be staggered terms of one year, two years. And how many of these board members are already, you know, close to expiration? And are they going to be in holdover when their term expire? So I just want to share my concern. So Resources and Development Committee is, you know, oversight over some of these enterprises to Navajo Nation. And also, I believe, N'aukia Tiet and full council have oversight over, you know, other enterprises of the Navajo Nation. And one of the big concerns that we're seeing right now is, and it clearly states, you know, in the legis, in the enabling legislation, with the establishment of these enterprises, were approved by council, that the reporting mechanism back to leadership was, you know, important. But it goes, it's very often that the communication back to leadership or even Navajo Nation is not there. And then I'm going to put on the record, you know, that we have Navajo CDFI, that's also in a similar situation. And it's very unfortunate that a lot of our enterprises are currently in this very not good financial health, is I guess is what I would say. And I know that you've inherited a lot of these, or you inherited the current situation that Notani Development Corporation is currently facing right now. But if you really look at the full context since the establishment of Notani Development Corp. to now, with the investment that Navajo Nation has made from the Permit Trust Fund in hopes that NDC was supposed to take that economic engine helm and see some sort of a revenue stream through dividends back to Navajo Nation as Navajo Nation is exiting the fossil fuel industry and looking at alternative economic developments platform, whether it's here on Navajo or off Navajo Nation. And at this point in time, I just don't see, since 2017 to now, it's been eight years. And I just don't see Navajo, Notani Development Corp. being in a, you know, position to really even move forward. And I guess the question is, is, you know, are my colleagues here on 25th Navajo Nation Council open to invest more money when we're already going to be experiencing, you know, shortfall of revenue? And sometimes I don't understand why our enterprises continue to work, you know, in silo modes, meaning independently, instead of really coming together and bridging that partnership and creating that alliance because we have Navajo Nation Hospitality Enterprise, we have Navajo Nation Oil and Gas and Tech. And I think, you know, if that particular option or approach was taken, and I think it would have a really stronger position. But I just don't see it working at this time. And I, you know, And I, you know, agree with what Honorable Claw had mentioned. Do we want to even continue with the existence of Nahtani Development Corporation? You know, just looking at your financials that you've provided in the report. And, you know, looking at possible future, we can't look at future performance, because, you know, looking at financial projection, really, there's no funds that, number one, the board members can operate on in terms of their salary, and where's the capital gonna be coming from? Do we really have investors that want to invest in unfortunate business practices that, you know, kind of already set the mark for Nahtani Development Corporation? So again, you know, people don't want to take that type of a risk, especially if they want to do investment. And I don't know if that would be the better option going forward? Or is it now the time just to kind of cease and have Nahtani Development Corporation, you know, just reexamine, you know, through every lens from a business and financial perspective, saying that, do we continue this effort or not? Because at the end of the day, you know, I know that there are some proposals for investment options that will be requested here to Navajo Nation. And, you know, at this time, it's very, very questionable, because this is not the only enterprise that is struggling financially. There's a lot of other enterprises. And it's very unfortunate that, you know, these permit trust dollars that were put into place by our prior leaders, you know, weren't utilized for the intended purpose when, you know, these enabling legislations were established. And I do commend my leaders from the past, you know, with the vision that they had. But that vision just really didn't fall through. So again, I'm really on the fence about this in regards to, do we even continue the efforts with Nahtani Development Corporation? Because you're supposed to be operating at a federal level. You know, do we even have that federal charter with, in terms of applications that might have supposed to have been filed annually? And how does it look right now? So again, I just wanted to share, you know, my thoughts, because I think, you know, Resources and Development Committee has been trying to strategize with enterprises, and even some of the divisions that we have oversight over in regards to looking at real, you know, revenue stream back to Navajo Nation. Not just these small projects right now, but how do we really maximize and diversify our portfolio? So that, you know, going forward, that our leaders and the governmental operation, you know, won't have to stress about financial shortfall to operate the Navajo Nation government, and even the programs that the Navajo Nation currently subsidizes. So there are some really big issues that, you know, this council is faced with, and even more so going forward with 25th Council or 26th Council. So just hearing this from a leadership perspective, it is a concern. And I don't know if there are reassessment and a reevaluation needs to be done. And having that thorough analyses come back before this body and say, do we want to continue forward, or however that's gonna look? So I just wanted to add that as a comment. But if, you know, Mr. Black Horse, you know, feels like he wants to make a response, Madam Speaker, he can. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Jesus. And we'll go back to Mr. Black Horse for questions that were raised by Delegate Nez and also Chair Jesus.
All right. And to Delegate Nez, a timeline, to answer your question about a timeline. I can show up whenever you need me to. So if you just invite me to, maybe it's a committee meeting, or if it's this whole committee, or if you just want me to go to HES, or RDC, or BNF, just let me know. And I have no issues with coming in front of the committees. So in terms of a timeline, it's whenever you have availability. I mean, all right. And then just adding some comments to Honorable Jesus. I think it is a tall task. I don't want to, I don't want to sugarcoat it. And I'm not trying to sell you, I'm not a snake oil salesman. There's a reason why the three projects that I've dedicated my time to, there's a reason why those projects were picked. And that's because they're cash flowing. And in those cash flows, those, two of those businesses have strong financial statements, and they've shown year-over-year growth. And it's through those cash flows, NDC would recapitalize itself. So there's enough cash flow in those assets to, one, provide a dividend back to the nation, and, two, provide some operating capital for NDC. The only one non-cash flowing asset would be the investment in the sports team. And if you guys don't want me to do that, then I'll just take that one off. But, I mean, I think that there's vast opportunities to continue having NDC as an entity. And the reason for that is because the nation hasn't even flexed its, or utilized the tax advantage that comes with NDC. So the best way I describe things is, think about buying something that's already positively cash flowing, and on top of that, not having to pay federal income taxes. So any business that NDC enters into is immediately a benefit of that income tax bump. Also, what I want to share with you guys is, my board has been meeting every month, because that's required by our charter. Despite not getting paid, they are continuing to show up. So this, from that standpoint, in them continuing to devote time and energy to this entity, that shows me that they're committed as much as I am. And I wouldn't have stepped up in this role if I wasn't committed to seeing this through and riding the ship. And I think that was it. But like I said, it is difficult to ask you guys to take a leap when you've taken a leap and it hasn't paid off. It's almost like asking you to do something one more time. But I promise you, if I come back here asking for money again, that'll be the last time. I don't, I won't need any cash after that. And my goal for Nahtani is to just be the primary economic driver for the nation. If you look at other tribes and the way they utilize their Section 17s, you'll see that they put their enterprises underneath their Section 17s. And the reason for that is it facilitates an avenue to dictate where dividends are going. Because all these enterprises would have to answer to the Section 17 Board. And that Board would decide when to declare dividends. Like I said before, my Board is committed to doing 20% of our profits back to the nation. And also, my Board is committed to reducing, taking that reduced stipend for as long as necessary. Because we did that in order to ensure that we could continue to operate as an entity. The main focus for that was to do that. So thank you, guys. But I do appreciate all the comments. I do appreciate all your concerns. And I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Black Horse. And there are several delegates that are still in queue for questions on the report. And thank you, staff, for passing out lunch. And today's lunch is brought to you by Mr. Terry Dayish, sitting on the south corner. So thank you very much, Mr. Dayish, for being here with us. I can't see you behind these poles, but thank you, Shiyash. And going next to Delegate Arben Mitchell, then followed by follow-up questions by Chair Parrish.
Thank you. Although, I'm sorry, I'm not answering. Although, Mr. Dayish, I'm sorry, I'm not answering. I'm not answering. Although, I'm not answering. Some of the questions that I was gonna pose has been answered. Although, one of the question, I'm sorry, I'm not answering. Which I believe is very important, for the public to know. On your report, Appendix A, and just to reiterate with all the folks that are listening out there, Although, the bottom line. I, you know, you have only 3,000 to show for in the bank. And I'd like for you to confirm that? What the actual balance, what you guys have right now? I'm sorry, I'm not answering. Then in your report, it also states that there's 60, 61,000? I don't know if that 61,000 is part of the balance. So that'll be my question. I'd like for the public to hear the actual, your actual expenditure. Although, a lot of them was used for board membership. Although, that was my first question. The second question I was gonna pose is also, you sort of answered it. I, going to page three of six, the very last one, the last section. There's three projects. There's three projects that you listed on here. Your proposed project, I guess it's proposed. I wanted you to go into detail on these. You covered some? I don't know if you still want to go into detail. Although, you just covered owning a sports team a while ago. So I think that's one of them on here. So those will be my question. Although, the other one, comments, you know, where I guess Navajo Nation, right now, we're on the risk side. We're on the risk side. And then if you're gonna do investment, they'll probably look at your expenditure, the one that you just showed. You know, or are they willing to invest in Navajo? And just recently, our audit just came out, the full Navajo Nation audit. And, you know, it's not too well, not too good. Although, our reputation, our governmental reputation, you know, that's out there. Every day, I'm sorry. So I think, I don't know how well our investors, if we ever get back on track, will invest. I understand, way back when it first started, the intent was good. Chapter 17, the intent was good. I don't know how we can get back on that track. So those are my question, my comment, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Mitchell. And then going next to follow-up questions by Chair Parrish.
Thank you, Speaker Curley. Thank you to my colleagues for asking such thoughtful questions today. I think it's a good conversation we're having this afternoon. Speaker, I wanted to know if this report was requested by a committee member? Or was this your recommendation as a shareholder? I'm interested to know the origin of this report here, because the chairman has also reached out to the Budget and Finance Committee to meet with them. However, when the request was made to the Budget and Finance Committee, the intent was not clear. So today, you know, our colleagues are asking questions about the history, about the past, but also, and the responses we're hearing back from the chairman is about a future project. And I feel uncomfortable discussing future potential projects when a lot of the past of this corporation is not clear. And I have a lot of questions on the, on the responsibilities and also how this corporation is taking accountability. So I don't know if anyone from the Department of Justice is taking a closer look at this, white collar crime. I know that they have their federal charter that was passed by the Navajo Nation Council, which would take an act of Congress to amend and to continue to change. But my concern is, how is this discussion about future projects and investments by the Navajo Nation appropriate when we're not addressing these big red flags? I mean, how would we, we would not sit here today with Zenni Holmes and have a discussion about a missing 24 million? And now this corporation has a missing 2.5 million? How is this any different? So I'd like to know the origin of this report, and then also ask our legal counsel what could be done regarding any referrals to ethics and rules. Just this week, I know Budget and Finance Committee, and also the Resource and Development Committee had to handle a corrective action plan regarding the Navajo Arts and Crafts Enterprise. And what the Budget and Finance Committee did was, we had to offer our recommendation to the Office of the Auditor General for them to be referred out to appropriate entities so that that could be further looked into. So I really want to caution the discussions we're having. I don't know why it's an appropriate time to have a conversation about quote-unquote "future" investments from the Navajo Nation Council. I don't know how this corporation is also taking into account the Navajo Nation Master Investment Policy. So before I ask any questions back to the presenter, those are my questions to you and to also our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Parrish. And as a shareholder of NDC, we did not request this N'abekia Tiet Committee report. However, it was committed or requested through Mr. Black Horse to our advisor here. So that's how it got on our agenda. It was scheduled last week again, but we rescheduled that meeting, then now to today. And then as a shareholder, I have not seen any of, this is the first time I'm seeing the document myself. So going back to Mr. Black Horse. Chief, we do have Ms. Christine Lowell with the Office of Legislative Counsel.
Good morning, good afternoon. This, in response to Chair Parrish's question, I did respond directly by email. My suggestion is that the N'abekia Tiet Committee give a directive to the speaker requesting that ethics and rules be advised of the specific concerns. The other thing I noted in my email was that I did reach out to DOJ to ask if white collar crime has a specific process for taking complaints or concerns for investigation. I have not received a response back from them, but as soon as I do, I will reply through email. Thank you.
Thank you to OLC for providing that guidance. We haven't get any response yet from Department of Justice. But Chair Parrish, are there any other additional questions to the presenter?
Thank you, Speaker Curley. I'll wait for the advisement from the Department of Justice and also our legal counsel regarding any appropriate directives that we may have to make here at N'abekia Tiet Committee. The only question I have for our presenter today is in the charter that was approved by the 23rd Navajo Nation Council, the federal charter. It states that there needs to be, and there needs to be unaudited financial statements that are shared with the shareholders. And the corporation has 120 days to do that after every calendar year. And it has to also be shared with the Controller's Office. I don't know, under the leadership of Mr. Black Horse, if that has ever been done. So this is not asking for the full audit itself, but unaudited financial statements need to be shared in order to maintain your article, I think it's Article 17, or 15. One of them said 15. 15 is accounting and reports to the shareholders. And then in E, it says, "The corporation shall within 120 days following the close of the corporation's fiscal year submit to the shareholder representatives with a copy to the Office of the Controller of the Navajo Nation audited financial statements..." With a copy to the Office of the Controller of the Navajo Nation, I audited financial statements showing financial status of the corporation as of the last day of the corporation's most. Recent financial and reporting financial results and of the fiscal year, which financial statement shall be prepared by an independent CPA. To the annual performance assessment. That's, that's just E. But if you scroll back up to B. Or no, C. That's where B or C, D, and E. They all state that there should be involvement, at least with the Controller's Office. Sitting on the Budget and Finance Committee, we do ask our enterprises and corporations to share that, but I haven't seen that yet. I don't know if the Resource and Development Committee has seen that, but our, our shareholder here, the speaker is saying that she has not seen it yet, and that's concerning. That's my only question to our presenter. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Parrish. And then going back to Mr. Black Horse.
All right. To answer the question posed by Honorable Mitchell. NDC has roughly as of today about eighteen hundred dollars left in its account. And that money, the discrepancy between the three thousand and the eighteen is due to traveling here and traveling to the nation to handle some business affairs on behalf of the organization. So that, that's what, we've reserved that last five thousand dollars to make sure that we're able to have enough funds to come here. And continue to progress down, asking or talking about different projects. Out of respect to Honorable Parrish, I won't go into details about the projects. It's because she raised, she made a comment about the appropriateness of talking about future business ventures. So, but I'm welcome, I'm welcome to talk to you offline. And also, you, you, you made a, you made a comment about reputation. I think that this whole process for me has been a learning experience. I think one thing that I can see that I didn't get the benefit of is having someone that was here to, that, that, like, someone that passed the reins over. When I tried to reach out to the prior board, they basically told me to go kick rocks. Because they were objecting to the validity of their removal. So I never had anyone walk me through this process and figure out who to talk to, how to ask the council for money, things of that nature. And I came to you guys because numerous times I've been asked what happened to the two point five million? What happened to these funds? So I took it upon myself to provide you with a breakdown of where that money went. And that's why I came to you guys here today. No one told me to come here. I, I just know that it's something that needs to be put to bed. And then Parrish, Honorable Parrish talked about responsibility and accountability. I would say that the accountability is coming by way of the DOJ's open investigation into the prior board. I am not, I don't interact with the DOJ and I don't try to influence anything that's going on there. If there's a request for information, obviously I will provide that information to DOJ or whatever they need from me in assisting. And then there was talks about a red flag. So the, one thing that I do not appreciate is being grouped in with Zenni Holmes. I didn't lose twenty-four million dollars. NDC did not lose two point five million. I showed you exactly where it's at, the two point five million is accounted for. And I have the bank statements to provide you with this Excel spreadsheet that I put together. No one told me to do this stuff. No one advised me to say, hey, take, take time out of your day to go through these historical bank statements. And catalog all these expenses and figure out how to do this. I did it myself because I know that it needed to be addressed. And unaudited financial statements, I, I can work on that. As far as getting audited financial statements, I'm not a CPA. And if you guys know anyone that would do it for a handshake and a hug or dinner, please point them my way. But what I'm telling you is like to maintain business viability. I don't have, NDC does not have the capital to pay for things like audits. Though my last hail mary was to clean up all the legal issues. And so you'll see that a lot of the budget was diverted towards legal expenses. Because when I absorbed this position, legal was what I was trying to make sure that I was abiding by, making sure that everything was on the up and up. And making sure that I covered the organization's butt from anything that might be pending or anything that might come down the road. But thank you, I will provide that audit. Actually, the unaudited financial statements, I can do that. It's very simple. There's not a lot of revenue that was generated. I say, the only revenue that was generated by NDC, NDC was six thousand dollars, which was work for DED. All right. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your concerns. Like I said, the only thing I take issue with is being grouped in with operators like Zenni. I think that maybe I didn't say this before. But yeah, I'm aware of some of the people that Shawna Claw brought up, but I'm not like them. And to group me in with them is somewhat disrespectful to me and the reputation that I built. Because it's not only my reputation that feeds other Navajo people, because they, they rely on me to have a squeaky clean image because I manage money in my day job. So this idea of grouping me in with bad actors, that doesn't just have impact over my role as the chair here. It has role in my daily life and it could impact the way that I sustain myself. So thank you for your comments, though.
Thank you, Mr. Black Horse. And then going back to follow-up questions by Delegate Law, then followed by Delegate Dr. Andy Ness.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Black Horse. And I think you just asked my next question, which is. You did state that you did not want to be grouped in with the previous group. So if I could have perhaps our shareholder, Madam Speaker, if you could tell us who were the previous board members and the previous CEO? If you could disclose that at this time? And then also going back to part of the responsibility. So the responsibility is that as a shareholder, and that was why a shareholder position was also created for these enterprise. Our current shareholders are Dr. Boo Nigren, Speaker Crystalin Curly, Cheyenne Lacy, and Ruben Mike. So as you heard, they have not received any information. And I think as a shareholder, oftentimes, maybe you're a little hesitant to ask for reports. But I think in this case, that needs to happen and that needs to occur. So I did do a directive request and I did send that to our Legislative Counsel. I believe they're still working on it because there are different facets that need to be addressed here. One is the reporting, as you heard from Madam Chair Parrish, that unaudited report, which would fulfill your Section fifteen requirement. And also just the fact that we need the shareholders to meet with the board. And to actually declare what the next viable steps are for NDC. And one of them is, has the board even considered Chapter eleven bankruptcy? Because you're getting pretty close to that. And as you stated, many of the board members, you're working out on, on a volunteer basis. And I still have a question of conflict of interest on one particular board member, who I have stated, Pawi Rivera. And his affiliation with a shareholder, Dr. Nigren. So to me, I think we do need to have that addressed here. Within that directive, I am requesting for information to be given to this council within sixty days. So that the council can consider the next option of where it wants to go with Ntani Development Corporation. You've heard from several council delegates today that they are not in favor of giving any other financial assistance as far as projects. And although, you know, you may be the credible person. But I think with your business sense, you do have to lead the discussion as well. Because how long can your five thousand dollars really carry you? I mean, that's the number one thing as a business owner. You have to know when to close the doors if you're not able to bring in any revenue. And that poses a serious discussion, not only with the board, your CEO, and your shareholders. And so that's part of the directive is the shareholders will have to get involved. And they will have to help make this decision because they ultimately report back to council as well. And so those are some of the concerns that I have. So at this point, when will Ntani Development Corporation, if they're not willing to make any changes, declare Chapter eleven? And again, I've asked for the names of those board members to be shared with the public because they did use the public's money. And they had all this time from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, all the way to now, to create revenue. But all we see is they pocketed it, they did not have any end results, they did not give any reporting to the council. And I do commend you for having the courage to come before council. As you stated, no one forced you to be here. You came in your own accord to deliver this message so that you could, number one, you know, just. Come out with a clean slate and say, you know, we're not part of this missing two point five million dollars. And although that is commendable, I mean, the end is still, you don't have enough money to operate. And that's the sad part, is that, you know, you're sitting here, holding the bag, and everyone walked away. And you're trying to sustain this corporation, but realistically, I, I don't know what the probability of that occurring is. So those are just some of the questions that I have. And then also the shareholders, I did request for a written report from them as well as to how they see, you know. Their vision of this continuing. And although the council here may or may not want to dismantle the corporation. But we have many of our constituents listening and watching and seeing if we're really gonna put forth action. Instead of just complaining and our words falling on deaf ears. So it's really crucial at this point. And there's other enterprises that are in a similar situation. You've heard Madam Chair Jesus talk about Navajo Arts and Crafts. Again, very unfortunate that board members took advantage of the system, paying themselves outrageous stipends and bonuses. For what? I don't know, because the businesses aren't thriving. Why would you pay yourself a bonus if your business is not thriving? That just makes no sense to me. So Madam Chair, that would be my request, is to see if the directive is ready. And I know it does fall on the Resources and Development Committee, but however, shareholders do have to answer to Navajo Nation Council. So that directive may be split into different authorities. So I just wanna do a follow-up on that and those would be my questions. And I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
All right. OLC said they still do need additional time. And also, I do believe with the financial statements, as a shareholder for NDC. We can go back to some of the resolution that the president and the speaker automatically deserves as a shareholder. So since that time, we met several times. One of the actions that, the first action that we have taken was to terminate all the board members all at once. At that time, it was unclear who was still sitting on the board member. But I was getting, being served by letters by the board chair in DC at the time, Ann Leebe Gay. So all of those were concurring and then the new CEO. So at that time, too, it was very unclear who was the CEO of NDC. So what the shareholders did was replace the board with Mr. Black Horse. And then the other shareholders, it was a give and take. You know, it's all by a vote that we take as shareholders to appoint board members. I mean, I lost some, but it's just the way how voting goes, I guess. But anyways, in terms since then, we haven't met since, I think it was earlier, way past this year. So we have not had another shareholder meeting. But one of the direction that we gave the board is to start the investigation and also starting to see the financial records. So as a shareholder, to this day, we have not seen any type of audit or any type of. And that was through the, our previous chief legislative council's guidance. Ms. Dana Barbaroff that we, I worked with to direct the new board members to start looking at investigations or audits. Before anything moving forward. So many of our, our own OLC has been there, part of the process with me during those meetings, so. But we're more than welcome to share if there will be an upcoming meeting next with the new board members that have been placed in. So that would be my responses as a shareholder. But I know that Mr. Black Horse have been working with the board since then. So we'll go back for follow-up questions that was raised by Delegate Law to Mr. Black Horse.
Okay, so at this moment, there's no, no conversation of filing for Chapter eleven. NDC doesn't have any outstanding obligations. So there's really, I mean, if we were to, there'd be no, nothing, there's no debt collectors coming after us that we need protection from. So, but I mean, i- i- if, if council wants to shut down the Section seventeen, I'd highly advise against it. The way I've been described, describing this enterprise or this entity, it's like a Ferrari without gas. Like imagine having this car parked, Navajo has this car parked, it just doesn't have any gas right now. And it's. It's a little, I, I take full responsibility for not communicating better with you guys. And that's, that's on me, that's my fault. And if this entity were to fold under my watch, I, I'd feel that that would be on me as well. But this idea of letting something like this go by the wayside without having it fulfill its full potential. That's a little, as, as a Navajo citizen, that's hurtful to me. Because I understand, I, I know that I haven't communicated my vision probably as clearly as I can, because this isn't the forum to do so. But I believe in this entity in terms of being a catalyst for restoring Navajo back to the national prominence that it should have. This is our Southern Ute Growth Fund. This is our avenue to bridge the gap between budget shortfalls. I know that a lot of enterprises come up here and they talk about the dividends that they pay back to the nation and they say, well, we provide jobs. That's not my mindset. My mindset is a dividend is a payment, it's a check. The jobs would be there regardless. The, the jobs would be there as a function of the business. My biggest, what, what I'm trying to accomplish is just to be the economic driver for the Navajo Nation. If I can. All I need is a proof of concept. If you guys understood and saw, I didn't bring like these crazy deals to the council. It's a real estate purchase. It's an investment into an already cash flowing business. Two, two of these businesses are already cash flowing. I'm not coming up here to ask for you to, to put, invest money into startups. I'm asking you to invest some of the money into businesses that are already cash flowing, that have positive cash flow, that will provide immediate return. And there was a purpose for that, because I needed to restore some of the trust that was lost between this entity and this oversight. Because I needed to restore some of the trust that was lost between this entity and this oversight. And as far as scheduling shareholder reps meeting, we are currently circling the date of having a shareholder reps meeting on the 20th of this month. Two of the shareholder reps have agreed to meet on that day. So a lot of this is just trying to track down different shareholder reps because obviously, two of the shareholder reps are really busy. And so it, it's sometimes, I just try to work around everyone's schedule. So right now, what I'm forced to do is have two shareholder reps meetings. Because, I mean, obviously, there's reason, I mean, I don't want to get into that, but... Like I said, yeah, I, I, I know coming up here and asking for belief is difficult. But I don't want you guys to give up on this entity. I, I know that there's a lot of trust that needs to be restored, and I understand some of that is my fault, some of that, I mean, it, it should all be my fault. And whatever, however we move forward in correcting that relationship that was kind of injured, I'd like to do that. Because what you'll understand about me and getting to know me is, I don't, I don't have a, I'm not like Mr. Brash, bravado. I'm kind of just keep to myself and siloed. I'm like a dog that doesn't show its teeth unless it has to. So with that, if you guys have any more questions, if I didn't answer anyone's questions, please restate it and I'll, I'll answer. Thank you, guys.
Point of order raised by Delegate Law. Yes, Madam Chair, I did request for the names of the board members. If you could just share that, that was one of my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you Delegate Law. So I could go back through my emails. I, I didn't have the list of the previous board members, but we did ask some of our attorneys that may have had it. So we'll type those out and then send Jalissa, that email will be coming from Jalissa. Then going next to follow-up questions by Delegate Dr. Andy Ness.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. So Mr. Black Horse, my comment about timeline was because there's still, as I mentioned in my initial statement, a lot of gaps on what's being presented and more verbally than what is written on your report, including the investigation, the accounts for funds, et cetera. And that's why I was asking, what is a projected timeline to be able to get a more comprehensive report from you? And so your response of whenever, I, I feel is unsatisfactory because if we gave you to tomorrow, you wouldn't have that, and tomorrow is a whenever date. So I look forward to the directive because that's where I was aiming towards is to see if it's something that requires 60 days, as Honorable Claw had mentioned. But if it's whenever, maybe we can break that down to 30 days or even 15 days. Considering it sounds like you have a lot of information that would, you would be able to obtain, to declare that whenever we would receive the updated information, we can receive it. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify that statement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Delegate Dr. Andy Ness for that follow-up questions. And in other words, earlier, just looking back at the resolution for shareholder, I can also appoint a Desert Nez, so if you're really passionate about NDC, I know my calendar is always conflicting out. So, but I just leave that back up to the committee if there's that, that interest. Going next to Delegate Ricky Ness, questions and comments?
Thank you, Speaker. And Mr. Delmar Black Horse. Yet, I didn't catch your clan earlier. I'm from San Juan Chapter, over along San Juan River. Now, I would like to say, first of all, Mr. Black Horse, you seem like a very honest individual. And I'm just listening to you and your response. You're over there at Nataani Development Corporation. You've inherited something that, you know, shouldn't reflect on you. But I see that you have the intrinsic motivation to change and do something about it, to give it a name that would reflect some integrity. Something that would show that this is worth saving. We're all humans, Mr. Black Horse. I was sitting here thinking about NHA, their situations for years. I was thinking about Navajo Arts and Crafts Enterprise. And at one time, we were, I, I'm not going to group you with them or anything, I'm just talking here, so... NHA, how do we change? For years, it's just the way that it is. They're the designated housing entity for, for the nation. And how will, how, how would it operate different and better so they won't lose money from the federal government? Maybe clear off the board members. Maybe, maybe put up a new sign, you know, and H A changed the name. But would that, would that help? Probably not. So I'm sitting here thinking, Navajo Development, Nataani Development Corporation. The word Nataani, if you dissect that word, the root word would take you back to all these words have value, Mr. Black Horse. I'm sitting here thinking, you would make a good candidate to take one of these seats here on the council floor. If you start now, talk to your people, hold a position here. Be the agent of change that the people are looking for. Right now, when I go to my chapter meetings, they tell me, Delegate Ness, what are you doing in Wanda Rock? And then I say, I'll sit there and thinking, and I'll say, oh, I am a part of the government. And then I also say, yes, I'm only one individual on the council. What would my voice mean to the rest of the council? I can't persuade them. You know, they, they have their own minds, they have their own way, their own vitality as far as leadership, how they define that. Now, I'll also say, yes, it is my fault. But also, you voters, it's your fault as well, you voted us all in. So we all are at fault. I'm not here to point at your fault, Mr. Black Horse. Because I can look in the mirror and find a few things that would say, work on this to be a better person, a better leader, a better servant for the Navajo people. Now, back to the label of Nataani Development Corporation. Maybe the first word, Nataani, needs to be removed. And consider putting up a new sign with your new ideas and new board leadership. Maybe remove Nataani and put in their sheep herder or shepherd. Because there, a shepherd has so much valuable work, characteristics to it. Not only is he walking around following the sheep, but protects the sheep, makes sure that he identifies where to take the sheep for grazing, where to take the water, where to get water for them to drink. Make sure there's no dangers of coyotes or wild dogs. That's what we're missing in leadership, the basic principle of leadership. We, we are convinced sometimes when a candidate tells us, vote for me. I'll present my proposition here. Here's my thesis. And then we follow it. Four years later, it's a cycle that repeats itself every four years. Every candidate talks about roads, water, electricity, infrastructure, economic development, hospitals. They talk about veterans, vote for me. And, and it's the same. But every four years, something on the Navajo Nation happens, which is called progress. Somewhere on the Navajo Nation, a grandma or grandpa or somebody gets water and electricity for the very first time. Somewhere, there's a ru, a road being improved. So that tells me, it's just an ongoing cycle that improvements will be made. But it would be a lie to the people to tell them that I'm going to fix all this, I have the solution. To me, I don't see things that way anymore. I believe that we've really drifted away from the basics of leadership. Mr. Black Horse behind you is the Navajo Nation seal. If you could really just kind of research and understand what the White Mountain represents, what the Blue Mountain represents, the Yellow Mountain, as well as the Black Mountain. And the philosophy behind it, the guardians behind it, and the rainbow, the corn, the horse, the cow, the sheep, the sunshine, the arrows. If you could just look at that and study it, that's what you call a Navajo, the foundation. That's what it is. I've read your presentation here, just looking at it. Molina Healthcare was a legislation that was brought forth during the 24th Council at the very beginning by one of my colleagues. And it never went forward because the governor of New Mexico didn't want monies to be taken from New Mexico. So it fell by the wayside. We were looking at approximately, maybe close to 50 million for the nation to generate revenue, but it never happened. And NDC was also working with my colleague in that respect, but it never went forward. So the other thing, this 2.5 million, I, I can see that you had nothing to do with that. Every time there's, there's money involved, you have to examine things. You have to look at it and say, how was this money used? Where, where did, where did this money go? What happened to this money? You, you see that we're like a coyote. I could present myself to you as someone who's, you know, clean everywhere. But yet, I might have some duplicity in my own way. And that would be like being a wolf in sheep's clothing. And I would just kind of go around and take, there's a difference between a robber and a thief. And a robber, on one hand, he'll most likely come in with a mask, threaten you with a weapon, tell you, give me your ring, your wallet, or go into a bank and rob the bank or whatever. A thief on the other side, you don't know how it's going to happen. It just happens. Until there's an investigation or they get caught, then we know the difference between a robber and a thief. And the evidence always presents itself. This is how this happened. This is who was involved. It was on this day at this time. And they start pointing the finger, and the truth comes out somewhere. So I'm just here listening to all this, and I'm thinking, you really have, like you said, you have like a vehicle with an empty tank. But think of it as a vehicle that's hybrid. You don't need gas. You could switch it to battery and take off with it, Mr. Black Horse. And move forward and say, I can fix this. I know I can. Or recognize your calling. Recognize that there's an area, you're a young man. And I'm proud of young folks that have the courage to come before council and present professionally what it is that you do. You just spoke earlier that you've managed, managed millions of dollars. I haven't seen your name on the front page in Navajo Times or Gallup Independent that you've embezzled money or involved in fraud or, you know, misuse of any money. You have a good record, Mr. Black Horse. Perhaps as leaders here, we really need to look at how NDC has been operating. We, there was mentions of conflicts of interest. There was mentions of accountability, transparency, all these words. Now, I think that when it's all done and said, leadership will probably take action as to what to do with it. But I wouldn't hold you to it or tie you to it. I would see that something had happened here from previous leadership there, and is it incorrigible? Can it be fixed? Can it be overhauled? Will we be able to see a check here presented to the Navajo Nation that has $1 million on it? Or $200,000? Or even $10,000? And say, this is what we've done. As leaders, we will make decisions. And the people will decide whether we'll keep these seats or not. Right now, our dear Navajo people are very unhappy with the Navajo Nation government, and I'm part of that. But I pray for all, that we all, as we say, refocus on what's in the best interest of the Navajo people. And that would involve a whole lot of humility. Right now, I, I, I see that to fix things would require the people to vote in some new people. Right now, I see that to fix things would require the people to vote in some new people that would be willing to be servants of the people. So thank you for coming before us. Back to you, Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. And then going next for follow-up questions, Delegate Yaizie.
Thank you again to everybody for asking good questions, and I appreciate, you know, the time that we're taking a look at this. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Black Horse, for your presentation. So again, I wanted to go back to the document that was sent by... that the enabling legislation. I wanted to ask if you had read, if you have a copy of the enabling legislation, CO... what was it on my notes? Do you have a copy of the enabling legislation? That was my first question. The next one I want to know is, have you read the entirety of that legislation? Because I know you said you came in, you weren't really sure where to start, but that's going to be basically your Bible and everybody else, all the board members, shareholders, everybody who's involved with this. It would be your Bible, basically. It's telling you what the federal charter is telling you is going to be allowable and what you can do. So you need to read that because when I look at your report, you know, there are some things that you're engaging in as a member is you're running the day-to-day operations because there's no CEO, because there's no funds to pay somebody to come in and do the day-to-day operations. And that is a violation of the charter, according to what I had read. And again, it had already been pointed out is that there's no financial reports, so that would be considered a noncompliance. And you did bring up that you have a spreadsheet. Is that something you would be able to share with Office of Controller? The other one is you're talking about setting dividends. That's not your role either. That would be something that shareholders, you would propose that to the shareholders, and they would vote on it. So be careful in doing that because that would violate also the federal charter. You also mentioned that DOJ has done an investigation, so I don't know if we could include that in the directive, is that we get an update on that investigation and what's going on. And it also had been, I think, requested that possibly referring this to the Office of the Auditor General to conduct the forensic audit, because again, you stated there's no funding. But we clearly need to understand where you're at, and before we get into any future businesses, we have to understand that. And I'm not comfortable in giving you in D.C. any more money without looking at your finances. So there's clearly a lot of things in that federal charter that we're violating, and that really does concern me. Because somebody's driving, trying to drive this Ferrari without a license is basically how I would look at it, too. If not, you know, we can return the Ferrari and get something that's more manageable for us. We shouldn't be trying to drive this car around if we don't know how to operate it because it seems like it's too fancy for us at this time. So those would be my questions. And then the other thing is, at some point, I think there needs to be a really... well, I think after the finance, after we get an idea of what finances are like for you and this enterprise, you know, then you can start talking about how to restore trust because we're really far away from that, I feel. For me, at least, we're far away from that at this point. Those are my questions, and thank you for your report. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Delegate Yaizie, for those follow-up questions. I'll go back to you, Mr. Black Horse.
All right. I am a... I do treat the charter as a Bible. I'll ask a follow-up with legal, but our legal team usually advises on what we're allowed to do and what we can't do. And I rely a lot on our lawyer to determine what we do as the board. So I'll follow up on those issues with him. At this moment, I don't believe that they're violations, just because I feel as if our legal team would have told us that there were violations. In terms of the forensic audit, yeah, I mean, if Navajo's willing to pay for it, that'd be very helpful and more than willing to share whatever I need to share with whomever is in charge of that task. And as far as the investigation, it's currently ongoing, so I don't think that it hasn't concluded. To my knowledge, it's still ongoing. And a legal firm was hired, and like I said, I just let them do their job, and I don't have any authority to impose any influence on them. Let's see. But yeah, to answer your question, I do have a copy of that legislation as well. Other thing, some housekeeping issues. I wanted to apologize to Dr. Andy Nez for being so cavalier in the timeline. Obviously, once I get an idea of what is being requested, I can provide more of a more reasonable timeline to that. Like, I could tell you tomorrow, but if it was just the Excel spreadsheet, then I could give that to you. But if you're requesting something for me to do some analysis on those, then it'd take me a little bit more time. So I want to say I apologize for being cavalier with the idea of, in quotations, "anytime." And also going back to Delegate Yaizie. Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, totally understand what you're talking about, restoring respect, restoring some semblance of trust with the nation. I would like to take the steps forward in doing so. I think that one thing that does become an issue is if I don't get access to the secondary bank account, then there's really nothing... then it might as well just be a Chapter 11 case. So that would be the only issue with stretching out a timeline. What else? Oh, also, I was unaware of any possible conflicts of interest from the board. So I just want to make it clear that I didn't know that there was any potential conflicts of interest when that board member was appointed, and I don't have any authority to appoint anyone, so just want to point that out. Yeah, and I just want to say thank you for all your comments. Thank you, Delegate Nez. I think that he mentioned serving the people, and that's what I'm trying to do in this capacity, is just serve Navajo. When you talk about making change, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to change the way Navajo does business with Navajo. I think that a lot of times, if you go out to some of these chapters, you'll understand that they're frustrated with Navajo, too, because projects are being pushed through these chapters. But the chapters aren't getting, I'll call it equitable, return for the development that happens in their backyard. The way that I can describe it is imagine a cell phone tower being put in your backyard, but the whole neighborhood gets the same check, but it's not in their backyard. So if you're putting the cell phone tower in your backyard, you would expect to get a little bit more. And so in terms of trying to redefine or figure out what the next steps are for Nataani, that was one of the reasons why I was kicking over every rock. That's why I went to go and evaluate the Molina Healthcare deal. I wanted to see if there was anything there because so many dollars had been put into that project. I've been trying to figure out the best course of action to, one, restore some of the faith that this council should have in this entity, and, two, get some revenue generating projects. So I do appreciate all of you. I appreciate the guidance, and I appreciate you taking the time to kind of mentor me in this way. I have no aspiration to be in your seats, just FYI. It's just, all I want to do is just do good business and operate as a mechanism of the nation, so I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Black Horse. And then going back for follow-up questions, Chair Jesus.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker and colleagues, and also to Mr. Black Horse for your response and the inheritance that you carry on your shoulders is a lot of information to take in. And now you've probably heard for yourself the concerns by council in regards to investments that have been made, you know, to the enterprises. And, you know, we look at, we always often ask questions about the return on investment and what is going to be the rate of return. And of course, all that information is usually provided in a business plan with performance attached to it. Well, in this case, it's a little bit complex, you know, because with the limited amount that you have in the bank account of what was initially appropriated for NDC. You mentioned the audit, so I know that when an audit is happening, there's always that documentation retention. And I don't know how the previous office was situated, so I don't know if NDC would have any of those documentation since the inception of NDC had happened, as an auditor would look at those to examine, you know, the performance of the entity. And so that's one question. Do you have accessibility to those documentations? And then the next one is, was the office located here on Navajo Nation, or where was the office located? That's my second question. And the reason why I say this is I'd like to offer a recommendation. We've done this for Navajo Nation Arts and Craft Enterprise, and I'm to ask for a performance audit, and that was paid by the Navajo Nation. I am currently in the process to ask for another performance audit for Native Broadcast Enterprise. And Navajo Nation is probably going to appropriate those dollars for it as it's not doing financially good as well. And we can do this, but when we're talking about a forensic audit, yes, that's going to be more intense, but it is my understanding that Office of the Auditor General that we work with, they would take the lead, but usually it would just be on a performance audit review level, not the real in-depth that we, that my colleagues are asking for. So I'm open to that recommendation, and I just need to know if there's documentations that can be examined during this time. The auditors will be doing that. And what I can do is also make that request in writing, if it's okay by Madam Speaker, since she is one of the shareholders, to take that approach. And maybe Madam Speaker can take that approach and ask for a budget to get an auditing firm to do a performance audit on NDC. So in hopes that it answers a lot of the questions that my colleagues are asking on the floor. So I just wanted to offer that recommendation. So, Madam Speaker, so those are just the two questions I have.
Thank you, Chair Jesus. And again, as a shareholder, I know there was a proposed date that was given by the chairperson of the board. What I can do is ask the chairperson of the shareholder committee, which is President Nygren, serves as a chairperson for that committee. So what I can do is extend that invitation to the committee members as well. You're more than welcome to listen into a lot of those meetings. Again, we have not received any type of report, financial report. Usually, I think the last financial statements that I receive was only like three sentences. So, but since that time, we have not seen anything else but other than the direction or recommendation that was given to the Department of Justice. But with those proposed meetings, I'll be requesting the chairperson to extend the invitation to committee members, so you're more than willing to join that next meeting to see what that next steps could be. I know there are certain areas that OLC is trying to address at the same time, but we can work along those lines. But just a recommendation, Mr. Black Horse, I know you've heard a lot of the concerns that were coming here from the committee, but I think if you keep updating that open communication, because it does come back down to leadership, the whole council, both branches. So just that recommendation to your chairperson for that proposed meeting that you just stated here today. But going back to your questions and answers, I'll have, give you the opportunity to respond to Chair Jesus. Mr. Black Horse?
All right, thank you. First question, audits. There was an audit firm that was hired that has been retained by the prior board. One of the first things that I tried to do is get, gain access to those audits. And without a subpoena, the firm that performed the audits are unwilling to provide me with that information. And I even had my legal send an email, and unresponsive. They have some reservations concerning legal implications of providing me with the audits because the contract was made with maybe the prior CEO. But historical audits for NDC do exist. I just don't have access to them. What's this next thing? Oh, and the office, previously, the office was located in space rented from Deneb College. It's unclear to me what campus the office was sitting in. I think it might have been the Shiprock office. But the only way I was able to discover that was through payments, rental payments made to Deneb College. And then, oh yeah, so that answers the question about the audits.
Thank you, Mr. Black Horse. And then going back for follow-up questions, Delegate Law, and then also Chair Jesus.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Shadaja. I did request for a directive, but I do see emails that were returned to me regarding the authority this council has. If I could also have our legislative council just address those issues that have come up. One of the things that I did request was for the shareholders to present a plan to counsel on how they will address the financial status of Nataani Development Corporation, and then also to consider recommendations by council to present options on how to keep NDC in operation. And then also that the shareholders should provide a written report on the viability of the corporation, and that that would be done within the 60 days. So since council does not have the authority, apparently, to make a directive, since it is a federal charter, then I'm requesting for the shareholders and the board to do this within good faith. As you have mentioned, you do have financial projects that you will be proposing to this council. However, many of us are reluctant, and in order to move forward to even consider these projects, we will need that request. And a directive cannot be issued at this time, so I'm asking you to be bounded by your good faith and your business sense to give us that information. In addition to that, there was a question posed by Honorable Sherilyn Yaizie as to your bylaws, and if you have any proposed amendments, that would be great to hear some of the recommendations. And then also, I think internally, you do need to have a discussion on the conflict of interests and also those business ventures that you are potentially seeking. And one of them, again, I did outline some, and that does involve my community. And so when it comes to my community, I am very protective of it, and I do not want the name of Chinli or either our business to be slandered or either to become a money pit of a place where people are taken advantage of. And that's one thing that I do not want to address. I'm already addressing that with a chapter audit, and that has been a fun ordeal so far. I also requested within the directive that we have our Department of Justice give a report to this council, whether that be written or an executive session. And the council does have the authority, since they are using the people's money to conduct... does have the authority, since they are using the people's money to conduct these investigations. So by all means, this Navajo Nation Council can issue the directive. So where that, we can get an update, and that would just be part of the request here. And then also, since our speaker does sit and speak for the council, I would request for her as well to try to ensure that all of these are done in accordance with what has been stated here on public record, since you are the shareholder, and if you do have a designated delegated to sit in your stead, then that individual should be able to deliver the report to this council. And so those were also some of the things that we mentioned were timelines. Honorable Shid Talith Dr. Nez did state that he was requesting for a timeline. So as you're indicating here, you do want to give a dividend back to the Navajo Nation, but we do need to know, you know, if that really is possible, and how many years will that take? Because if you're only sitting there with $5,000, and you're the businessman, and you know this business is not something that's going to sustain itself, at what point do you come to the conclusion of dissolving the business, or even, you know, just considering other options? And that's all we want to hear, because we are hearing from Madam Chair Jesus, it's just not NDC. It's now Navajo Arts and Crafts. It is now KTNN Native Broadcast. And we're hearing about NHA and all of these other enterprises that we're trying to push along. For many years, we've been facing idleness, we've been facing complacency, and that has really hindered the progress of the Navajo Nation. And so that's why it is important that we try to get these questions answered, so that we can move forward in a diligent manner to where we as appropriators can actually appropriate funds to enterprises that are going to be successful. You know, in years past, I certainly don't know how the operation of council was, and I believe we've hear, we've heard it over and over again, that it's not what you know, it's who you know. And those times have stopped now, because now we are demanding real answers to our questions. The other part that I did ask about as well was just, within this information, if we could get this back right away, so that we can prepare both financially, and as Madam Chair did state, she will do a performance audit request, and even that, you know, that is within the means of the council to ask for that. And, but I think you can fulfill some of that compliance by just doing your part, as was mentioned, the unaudited financials, once you submit that, then maybe that would be sufficient. But at this point, we don't have any of that information. And I did wait for the email to give me a listing of the former board members, I have not received that. So I think the public, there is an outcry out there, people want information, because eventually, some of these individuals, they will get recycled, they'll become board members, they'll become shareholders, they'll become candidates for elected positions. And I think at this point, for Navajo Nation, at what point do we create a black ball-less for individuals that have taken advantage of our Navajo Nation services, our funding, and the people? And I think that's really important, and that's what I wanted to add in, and those would just be some of my final comments today. So I do want to thank you, Mr. Blackhorse, for again, taking the initiative to be here with us, and then also to share what you stated as your vision. But I do agree with Delegate Yazi that we could have the fanciest car, it could go at the fastest speed, but if we don't have anybody that's qualified to drive that car, then maybe we need to trade it in for one of the most reliable vehicles, which is a Subaru Outback. I'm just kidding. So I just wanted to add that, but thank you, colleagues, for allowing me the time to express my concerns, and to those that are listening online. Shadaja.
Thank you, Delegate Claw, and then going next to Chair Jesus. And then that email is, was sent at 12:40 from Jeliseth Johnson. Chair Jesus?
Shadaja, Madam Speaker, and also colleagues that are still here, and to Mr. Blackhorse again, thank you. So since shareholders have been appointed, I really think that we need to make, be making these directives to the shareholders as they have been getting their report. And the reason why I say this is, I know that there was some issues pertaining to NDC, maybe even before Mr. Blackhorse came on board, but this council was never made aware of the current financial situation, and maybe even some of the internal issues regarding the overall, you know, management in these certain functional departments or areas of NDC. So with that, Madam Speaker, since you do serve as a shareholder, you know, the directives that Honorable Claw had mentioned, maybe you might want to go ahead and take that back with you to the shareholders, and also hold the board members for NDC to fulfill these requests. And what I'll do is, along with my request to Office of the Auditor General to do a performance audit for Native Broadcast Enterprise, I can just add NDC to it as well. But Budget and Finance was kind enough to share with me that I need to do a budget request, because apparently this has to be RFP'd out for, to an auditing firm, so I will go ahead and make that request. But this is a concern, and I just want my colleagues to know this. I know that a lot of my colleagues, I haven't even gone to one shareholders' meeting since I've been appointed to Navajo CDFI. But maybe now is the time that the shareholders to these certain enterprises with our colleagues start providing a, one consolidated report back to council, because I know some of them have staggered shareholders' meeting, whether it's on a quarter basis, or semi-annual or annual basis. Just to understand, because I think that as the rest of us, we don't know what's going on with a lot of these enterprises until we invite them to either this body, or maybe even one of our committees, and that's when we know things aren't going, going very well. So maybe this would be an area, I don't know where, under the title code, we would be able to make these amendments, or is it to the plan of operation of the enterprises? So that would just be a recommendation that I'd like to put out, because I know that we often don't hear anything from our colleagues that go to these shareholders' meeting, however often the enterprises have their shareholders' meeting. So in closing, I just want to thank Mr. Blackhorse for coming this far to Navajo Nation, and sharing with us your vision in regards to NDC. And I understand how the Southern Ute Growth Fund works, their section, our charter, Section 17, the way this particular entity is established. And what we've come to understand as Resources and Development Committee, when we met with the Southern Ute Growth Fund up in Ignacio over the summer, was that their tribal council does not get involved with those operations, but they hired the right people to run that particular growth department. And, you know, they diversified their portfolio internationally, and because of it, we always hear about them. And it would be great, you know, for Navajo Nation to be at that level of investment in every aspect. And again, I believe that was the intent of our leaders, but it's very unfortunate that it didn't head that direction with the initial people that were the startup to NDC. And, you know, we look to you and your colleagues on the board to be making those decisions. And what I would just kindly like to ask is that, communication is very important, and I think that a lot of our enterprises just really need to come back to this body or the oversight, just to give those general updates. And again, I wish, you know, much luck to however you're going to restrategize for an optimal plan that I would hope that you would bring back to this body, to where, you know, you all can take the intent and the vision to the next level. Because again, that's what we need, because all we're investing in right now is C-stores on Navajo Nation as a form of development, but in actuality, it does not bring revenue stream back to Navajo Nation. Yes, it creates jobs, and it brings in sales tax, and maybe some dual taxation because of non-natives, but other than that, it's just providing those basic necessity services to communities across Navajo Nation, but we need to look at a bigger picture. So again, I just wanted to share that, and thank you, and God bless you, and have a Merry Christmas with you and your family, Mr. Blackhorse. I know you took a lot in today. That's just a concern, because I just think as leadership, we're really frustrated. Oftentimes, I feel like we're lied to, and we just don't want that. So honesty and open communication is probably key. Shadaja, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Chair Jesus. I didn't want to interrupt you during your, your comments, but I believe we did lose quorum, so I'm going to do an official roll call first before we proceed. So roll call is open, colleagues, so feel free to press your button if you are still Just a quick update, but we're doing the, the roll call here. I know there has been several questions from the public on Report C, a report from President Daterbu Nygren. So this report has been on our NABKIA committee agenda since October, beginning of October, the first time it did get placed on our, our agenda was October 9th. So at that time, President Nygren was not here to give that report, and then a second time, and then this is the third time that it is on our agenda. However, we did receive a memo from President Nygren dated today, December 11, 2025, and it does subject hardship assistant program, full support and attendance notice, that he did say that he will not be able to make a NABKIA committee meeting, and then he just referred the plan back over to the controller, just in summary of what, but we will send again, refresher of that memo, and then also put that on our reports. So just for those that were here for that report, or those that are listening online. Our staff are checking the grounds, so usually we have delegates that are outside, so doing All right, thank you, colleagues. We do have quorum. So Safi, we can clear the board? Colleagues, are there any other follow-up questions? Chair Parrish, I believe your directive might be ready as well?
I can do that after.
Okay, you can do that after, okay. Colleagues, are there any other questions, comments on the report? I don't see any, so I'll put two minutes on the board to accept the report. I don't see any, so I'll put two minutes on the board to accept the report. Delegate Pahadi vote? And we do have a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed with the chair not voting. And that is a on a two-committee rule quorum. All right, we will move forward with the reports, colleagues, on B. A report providing an update on current operations progress and relative developments regarding Section 3 and 11. Presenters, DCD, and also FRF Office. And thank you again, Mr. Black Horse. Is there any representation from Division of Community Development? Or online? We only have Navajo Nation FRF Office here. Ms. Lisa Jim and also Mr. Wilson Stewart. All right, second call for DCD. And colleagues, are you okay with moving on with the report, just only with Navajo Nation FRF Office? Chair Jesus?
Aha, thank you, Speaker. So I think that, well, Resources and Development Committee has been wanting some information from Division of Community Development. As a matter of fact, I've sent, I believe, a follow-up email and then an additional email. But I haven't gotten no response from the Division Director in regards to current ARPA status. And it's unfortunate, and I believe that they're also very important to this discussion here today. So I would rather have the full team here before this committee to give a overall review on the current status of the ARPA projects, along with what is being looked at to be reverted back or what is going into hardship. So we need DCD here. Speaker Curly, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chair Jesus. I do see some head knobs that agree with the same statement. But we do have, if we do move forward, just to skip this report. Since DCD, they are already identified on the agenda. It's already been posted. And they already had enough notice to be here today. And this is also another carryover of a report from the last council meeting. So this has been a notice that has been given for at least two weeks. So for my colleagues, FRF did submit a written report, so at least you would have that on hand from FRF. But we also have the Controller that's also here. But again, DCD is not here. Also, are there any other objections of not hearing or deferring the report? Of Delegate Ness, and then I'll go to Delegate Daniels.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. So I would highly recommend we subpoena the acting-appointed Division Director, Ms. Yasi. The reason I say that is because my questions are geared more towards DCD. I have repeatedly have requested information, not only at HES but at RDC. And there's like critical information that I feel needs to be addressed before this body. And I think the last time Ms. Yasi was here in this chambers was back in summer session, which is back in July. So we've lapsed at least half of a year trying to obtain information. I have questions regarding to Work Order Number 5, have questions regarding the joint letter that was may or may not have been approved by Controller, which I have asked him about if what that position of that letter was. I have yet to hear a response. But I think it's just very important to bring Ms. Yasi here before the body. And you know, if this president is worried about who oversees how many chapters, this division sees oversees all 110 chapters, his own appointed Division Director. And I think it's important that this body hears directly from her. So that's my suggestion, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Ness. Going next to Delegate Daniels.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Delegate Daniels. So I don't see any objections to go forward or to skip this report for a later date. And there's also that request for a subpoena for Ms. Candace Yasi with DCD. And we'll work on that with OLC and schedule that either for a duly called special or regular NABKikiya Committee meeting, whichever comes first. So we'll work on that with our Chief Legislative Counsel. Okay, well, thank you again, Ms. Jim and also Mr. Stewart. I know you sat here all day. We greatly appreciate it, but we do have your written update and that has been sent to the committee. So colleagues, if you do have questions or need to see any update on your projects, refer back to that report. And Ms. Jim and also Mr. Stewart are always open to calls or emails or text messages on your projects. So thank you. So we will go down to Report C. Again, I mentioned earlier that was a report from President Nigren regarding fiduciary responsibilities and ARPA funding to assist the Navajo people with hardship payments. And that was, the presenter was identified as president. And again, we did earlier today, we received a memorandum addressed to the NABKikiya Committee from President Nigren noting that he will not be available for the committee meeting today. So but he did refer back to the Controller, Mr. Sean McCabe. So that was, and then he provided other details within the memorandum. So again, apologies to many of our viewers that are listening online that was looking forward to this report. But just in an announcement purposes, the hardship plan, the authority to do the hardship was already approved by this council more than a year ago. And there was a placeholder amount that was allocated in that legislation. So I do disagree with the president saying that there's no plan for hardship. This council has already authorized the Controller and the executive branch to provide that plan more than a year and a half ago, back in June 2024, I believe. So it was within the 521 legislation, if you do want to see the exact language. So colleagues, I am going to do a second call for President or maybe even one of his lead staff, chief of staff, maybe, if they are here. And third call. So colleagues, I'm just going to move forward with our agenda. And going now next to receiving reports that was added during our. Do you have the updated copy? Yeah, I don't. So that is Report C, an update report on the Ethics and Rules Office Transition and Operations. Presenters is the Ethics and Rules Office. So Mr. Morris, that is the new director for Ethics and Rules, did communicate with our staff. Oh, he's online. Okay. So Mr. Morris, are you joining us via Zoom? If he can hear us or if he can unmute. Point of order raised by Delegate Tolph?
Point of order, my point of orders, we need to have this individual in person. We don't want to listen, you know, on the phone. I'd rather have, there's a lot of questions that needs to be asked here. We're only a few of us, so. People are not interested to have NABKikiya. We drive all the way this morning and everybody comes in and then leave. How can we stop that? So it bothers me, you know. I wish I could live in 45, so I don't have to wake up early. Anyway, I'm just kidding, Daddy. I'm just joking, Daddy. Off the record, okay. So Speaker, oh, my young son, oh, my young son, counsel. I hate to say this. So why do we have NABKikiya? I have to change it to all the, like in back in my days, we have intergovernmental relation. All the chairs are part of government. All the chairs come to NABKikiya. According to Title 2, and we're trying to change some of that. So somewhere we got to change, make some changes. On stream line, some of people are already watching us. So it's kind of embarrassed to have this government like that. Instead, in Mexico, if one of the center or the House of Representatives show needs to be, you know, they use a policeman to hunt them down. The law says we have to meet here at 10 o'clock, not at 10:30. So I'm glad I have one more year to go. Then I'll be sitting out in the gallery observing you guys. So thank you.
Chair Parrish, there was that point of order that was raised earlier today. This was added as a report. So we did get notice that the the new director was out in Alamo, I believe. We're just talking to his supervisor here with staff that he was on his way back. But he was hoping to try and get here back in time, so we'll check with him to see where he might be at. So but there is that request that all reports, they should be here in person. Okay, he's on his way. Okay, so he is on his way. So Chair Parrish?
Thank you, Speaker Curly. I was just a comment on the Report C. I had my RTS button pressed since then, but my request for Report C, since we haven't taken a motion on D, was to work with the communications team to communicate this with the public. I think that the public has many questions about what's going on. But I think it'd be good for us as the NABKikiya Committee to also update them on the information that we have not received yet and how many times we've tried to to ask for that information. However, I also think that we should potentially have FRF leadership meetings at some point, just to get everybody back on track. Maybe that's a first thing goal in 2026, but it would be good to have that discussion. I know that many of the program managers at Division of Community Development and also the FRF Office are very confused about their standing and maybe positions within the division if they've been receiving changes. The Budget and Finance Committee has pressed the Office of the Controller to develop a plan of operation for the FRF Office, so that should be shortly coming, so that this confusion could be resolved. So I just want to share that additional information. I think that our people and, you know, this weekend, this Saturday, we have Western Agency Council meeting, and they're going to be asking these questions to us. So it'd be good to have at least some information from NABKikiya Committee back to the people so that we can share that with our council, agency councils. My thoughts on Report D, I also agree, I think we should defer it. I don't know how far the director is. Alamo is about two and a half hours, maybe three hours away. So I don't know how far he or she is from the chambers at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Parrish, for a lot of those recommendations. So I do feel that same pressure from the public on FRF offices. So I did instruct Controller to begin meeting with all of the entities, or he has already been. I think he's almost done. So once he has found all his findings of all the dollars, FRF dollars that have been allocated to enterprises or departments. Because one thing that we found out here at the committee level is when we bring in that the department or enterprise, we're always given that promise that we're on schedule. We can do it. We we're on track. We can spend this money. However, we really just need to take a deep dive, and that's what the Controller's been tasked to do, is start meeting with those departments or programs, either way. And then having a leadership meeting with the council once his report is completed. So we were hoping that it would have been completed towards, within this month. But it looks like now it's going to be at least dragging on to the first part of January. So we did instruct that to the Controller already and working. I believe BFC is also working on that same initiative with the Controller. So during, when we come back from the So during, when we come back from the holidays, we will be calling that FRF leadership meeting with the Controller, only with the Controller, to go over just the numbers, and then the feasible dates, and what really the hardship numbers, or what is actually, what would we need to do as a council? Because we have already given the authority to the Controller, but we still would like to help him with a lot of that decision-making post, because it will be coming up to expiration in 2026. So Controller, we'll be, again, working with you to identify a date. I believe in January. Now it's in January, right?
I'm finding out a written report to council.
Okay. So we'll be ready next week, but then they'll fall into the holidays, and I'll just be working with the chairs to see when, I know many of our standing committees are taking a recess during the last week of December. So we do want to have a bigger, many of our council members there at that meeting for those important meetings. So that will be forthcoming again. Thank you, Chair Parrish. And for on the public statement or the press releases, then we will work on that as well. And we'll work on that with the Controller. Okay. So that does take into account all of the recommendations, and thank you, Mr. Morris. I believe this is my first time meeting you, so thank you for coming here to our committee meeting. We were added as a Report D, the last report, from Ethics and Rules Office Transition and also Operations. So colleagues, I'm going to give 20 minutes for presentation to Mr. Morris.
Good afternoon. Yat Ashe, Rodriguez Morris and She. I am the new director for the Ethics and Rules Office. I apologize for being late today. I actually was in the field in Alamo, received the call about 10:52 to state that I was on the NABI agenda. So we got back on the road, we managed to get our work done there for the day, so we just, I just barely pulled in, I apologize for that. But I've been with the Ethics and Rules Office. My first day on the job was November 17th, I reported for duty there, and I've been in that position up until today. I have a lengthy background as far as legal practice. I've been practicing law for over 20 years, both for the Navajo Nation, various tribes. I also did legal work in the military as well, wherein I was legal, I was a legal specialist for over, for three years. I've done a lot of work with the various Apache tribes as well, the state of New Mexico, where I did unemployment cases as well. In addition to that, I sat for three years as a judicial hearing officer in Crown Point as well during the actual pandemic itself. I also, wherein I did hear domestic violence cases. I also have worked with the Ethics and Rules Office before. I was their presenting officer for four years prior to leaving the Navajo Nation, so I have a lot of knowledge and firsthand work that I've done with that office to include the work that was being done with the codes, with the procedures there and what have you. So I handle a lot of cases for the Navajo Nation within the Ethics and Rules Office itself. I'm also the Navajo Nation bar president as well, wherein I do volunteer my time there. I do not receive any compensation there. But with regards to Ethics and Rules Office, one thing I can tell you is that, I, within the past couple of weeks, what I've been doing is I've been looking at the actual cases itself right now, and just overall, I see that there is at least 222 cases that are currently pending with regards to various stages from preliminary inquiries all the way up into adjudication, investigations. So they're averaging about that amount, but there is a whole lot of other, there are more cases that have yet to be reviewed. There are intakes that are still pending as well. So I've been working at getting that all under control. I've looked at statistics as well for that office, and I see they average about 13 intakes per month. I think one of the higher months, they had about close to 30 intakes for one month. So they average those intakes, it's around 13 per month. I've looked at the actual restitution that was collected in 2025. The office has collected over $43,000 within that office as far as restitution goes. There are numerous cases or individuals that are noncompliant with actual court orders to repay the Navajo Nation. We are getting ready to file on those cases as well for order to show causes and to enforce the Office of Hearings and Appeals orders in those cases. In addition to that, we have just, we had, we've just hired a presenting officer who started on Tuesday. So I have another person that will be doing legal work with me. She's currently there in the office. We also hired on a new investigator who will be looking to start December 22nd, 2024. Thereafter, we will be fully staffed. So we are moving forward. I'm still getting that office in order. There's a lot of work still yet to be done, and I see that, for instance, you have a high backlog in the intakes, because the prior director had to work with a limited resource. He did not have in-house counsel, he did not have an attorney to work with. So he had a contract attorney that he worked with, and there was limited budget as far as how he utilized that attorney. He could not send over every intake that had come in, as he would have ran through his budget within weeks. So they had to select what cases went over, so that hints the actual backlog for intakes. So those are things that we're looking at. I will be assigning case reviews over to the presenting officer as well. She's been practicing law since 2006, so she's well-versed in that. I will be training her with regards to what's required for ethics cases itself. It is a special area of practice, administrative law. We currently have cases that are pending before OHA as well, and that's why I was out in Alamo today, meeting with witnesses and possible violations of the actual order. Individuals had called on Tuesday and raised a lot of issues with regards to possible retaliation. So I was down there, meeting with these witnesses, because I will be looking to most likely address those issues in legal pleadings and also meetings with opposing counsel. So as director, I'm not precluded from actual case management or handling matters within the court itself. I will carry my own caseload as well. The presenting officer will also be required to do that. I'm very excited with our new investigator that will be starting on the 22nd of December. This individual has a lot of knowledge. He has done a lot of work in white collar crimes, he has, he knows how to access all sorts of different records, and he also can assist our office in getting our investigator certified to do certain types of backgrounds, investigations, and to get certified to, as how to work financial records and what have you. So if anything, I am there. I did not bring all my reports with me as I am traveling, just pulling in here, if anything, but this is, as far as operations, it is moving forward. And I know, when I look at the actual, the current caseload and the current state of the government itself, from the time that I left that office, I see now that really the environment has really changed overall, just seeing the interactions, the cases that are coming through. I see that there are more volatility within the government itself. It's a whole different environment to where individuals have really emboldened themselves because there was lack of transparency. The Ethics and Rules Office has not had a director for over four years. They have been making efforts to try to get that position filled this whole time, and they, to my knowledge, they did have one individual that was interested, but the individual was requesting for more money, requesting for take-home vehicles, making all sorts of demands upon them. So they were not really able to pull this individual in. So you had an interim director that was there. He was very limited with regards, he didn't, he was not barred, so he could not make legal determinations on a, with regards to cases or any intakes that were coming in. So I believe we are in a good position. I do have the experience with that office, and then also with legal practice as well. I've had my hands in all sorts of different cases, you know, and I've done a lot of work for the Navajo Nation as well. My own mother believes that I, you know, she would have preferred that I not have entered into this position. She had already seen that I was already being bashed online, and you know, she, and she was worried for me, because the last time that I left, I had, I met with Law and Order, I advised them that I was shot at in my actual unit, the last time I was with Ethics and Rules Office. Nothing ever happened on that. The investigation was never completed, but I'm back here because I do have a passion for this work, and I do believe in government accountability. And right now, I see that there is, really is a need for it. So I'm here to serve the Navajo Nation, as I did my country, the seven years that I was in the military as well, and that's who I am. I really, I'm, I'm here if you wish to ask any questions of me, and we can go from there. But that's my brief presentation, Madam Speaker and Honorable Members of the Council.
I thank you, Mr. Morris, for that verbal report. And colleagues, I'm going to open up for a motion and a second, first. Motion by Delegate Law, second, second by Chair Jesus. And now we will open up for questions and comments. First, we do have Delegate Law.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and then thank you, Mr. Morris. Thank you for your introduction and also for your interest in the position. So I do have several questions relating to the position that you now occupy and how it was advertised. So I've been writing emails to our speaker as well as the council in regards to how this position was advertised, and if you actually are qualified. Because when I presented a legislation to confirm the Attorney General, one of the questions that was posed to me, although I'm not the one that appointed the individual, was to ensure that the candidate was indeed qualified. So my question to you is, what licenses or degrees do you currently have, and are you able to forward a resume of your qualifications? So we did hear you explain your experience, but within Navajo Nation Department of Personnel Management, there is an education requirement, and as well as experience. One of the concerns that I did express is that prior to you taking this position, the job vacancy announcement did change, and I did also include Ms. Resita Totti in the email, and I requested for what the qualifications were with the previous director, the interim director, as to the qualifications for yourself. And I did see a significant change in the qualifications, so I will be posing questions to our legislative branch as well as to who authorized those changes and why they did that. Because the first round of the qualifications was a high rigor. It required a bachelor's degree, as well as years of experience, as well as certain certifications. And so now, I saw that it did change, and I'm wondering why we did that. We always talk about our students leaving the reservation, going off to school, coming back and fulfilling those duties, but if we are undermining their education to help give a position to someone else who may not have that education, that's where I will express my concern. So I did send out an email on October 30th, and this was to Speaker, as well as Chief Rico, our chief legislative counsel, and then also to Mr. Harrison and Resita Totti. At that time, Mr. Harrison did announce that he was retiring, so I did congratulate him on the years that he did serve with our Navajo Nation. And then also, I did look and ask for the job description, which was not available at the time. However, Ms. Resita Totti did present that to me, and she did note that that particular job description was amended on October 28th, 2025. So Mr. Harrison's last day was on the 31st, and so I'm wondering who decided to change the job description prior to his retirement? And then also, we did hear from you, if you could tell us how many staff you currently oversee, and if you have any experience being a supervisor. I would like to hear some of that as well, because it's very difficult to take a position as a director, and the supervisory skills of that individual will also determine the retention ratio of our employees. We've heard from all different types of employees that work under different divisions and departments, and one of the things that we've heard is just a hostile work environment. And I want to know how, what your thoughts are on that, as far as, you know, what will best retain our employees, especially if they're working with Ethics and Rules. As you mentioned, you took a shot to your vehicle. So, you know, we do have employees that do face imminent harm, and I think oftentimes, sometimes that is internal, which is very sad. But I want to ask, was the position advertised in the newspaper or on the radio, and was it in compliance with Navajo Nation Code 15 subsection 604B and 6? And then also, was the position advertised through the Department of Personnel Management? And this was a question that I did pose to Ms. Totti, so I do want to just do my own checks and balance of if that question is a yes. How many applications were received? And this is probably the question for our legislative team here, of how many applications were received in response to that advertisement? Or was that advertisement offered in-house? Was it offered through the judicial branch? Or, I'm not sure where you said you came from, which department or division that you're coming from, but if you could also share with us which department or division that you're coming from? And then have you ever worked with the Department of Justice? Other questions that I have is, we have asked this on several occasions with very important positions here within the legislative branch, but we've never been given the answer of who serves on the selection committee for these prominent positions. And I, as a council delegate, have a vested interest, because I do have pending intake forms. Some of them have been outstanding for over a year. I've actually been directed by my committee to also serve as a representative for some of these intake forms. And so when you're telling me that everything's okay and it's moving along, I do need that reassurance, and probably in writing, because if you do say that you've occupied positions like that, you know that council relies on numbers. We rely on statistics, we rely on what's your priority case is, because for many years, we've been waiting on some of these intakes to move forward. And of course, it does factor into hearing dates and so on and so forth, but I think as a director, you have that capability to move those things forward. And I don't know if you'd have any authority or any other means as to how you can move those a little more quickly. You're talking about your budget, and I think all of us know that our budgets have been hit pretty hard. So what are you doing as far as ensuring there's going to be efficiency in getting these cases moving forward? And then also, we do have questions, I have questions, as to how we are going to move forward as far as the special process. forward as far as the special prosecutor. I know that we have not received a thorough update, or perhaps we have, but I haven't heard any information yet. But the special prosecutor will be working with your team, if not already. And so how is your team working with the special prosecutor? And what are they doing as far as, you know, their time management is what I'm concerned about? So if they're working with that, what time did they devote to that particular work as to the regular work? And then is there a possibility of possibly coordinating other services to bring in other people to help with the intake? So those are things that I'm listening for. And then when we're talking about the transition, um, have you sat down with your team to share what your goals and visions are? And then also, as far as your team, have they given you the update? And do you feel confident enough to move forward with all of the tasks at hand? And one of the things that, you know, we're always talking about here, and you did mention, is white collar crimes. So if you could just explain thoroughly to everyone here on the council floor, what is the process for how to move and begin the initiation of starting a case for white collar crime? We do know that you do have to work with the prosecutors and that in and of itself is a task as well because they are also swamped with different issues that they're addressing as well. And then as far as these files that you're currently working with, have you taken, you said you took a look at them, you listed out 222. Out of the 222, have you categorized them? What does it look like the overlying themes are and how will you be looking into that? So those are just a few of the questions that I will pose for now. And then as we go along, I'm sure my colleagues will also have questions. And then any other issues or concerns or questions that I have, I'll go ahead and address that. So I'll go ahead and turn the floor back over to Speaker and you may answer some. And then also Speaker Curly may also have to answer some of those questions as it pertains to how the selection of this position was made and also the advertisement. And then also, who did amend the job description? And when was that change made? And then who was consulted on the change to the job description? Because none of us delegates here had any knowledge of what was going to happen as far as a transition. All I know is that Mr. Harrison did tell the council that he would be retiring, but at no time was this council consulted to see if we weren't in agreement to change the qualifications for a position within our own branch. And so when we talk about transparency and accountability, I've always said it doesn't matter if it's the legislative, the executive or judicial branch, those are questions that I will pose. Because I think equity needs to be there, fairness needs to be there, and then also accountability. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Delegate Law. And then a lot of the questions that you're referring to can be referenced back to Title II, Chapter 6 and Subchapter 6 for Ethics and Rules Office, and we can send that out as well. But through there, as delegates, it's a very delegate, delicate, uh, situation, especially if you have a director, uh, I'm just only going to speak for myself as an example, as a speaker. We should not have political interference within how the processes or selections of Ethics and Rules. We, I do administratively oversee and help with the budget process, but they are more like an independent office that should be separated from any political influence. So, uh, Delegate Law?
Point of order, Speaker. Um, I just want to clarify that we're not asking about that. So the question I'm asking is in regards to the administrative process. I do know what is in Title II. We serve on Title II Subcommittee. So the process I'm asking is regarding the qualifications and how the change in the job description occurred and how you worked with the Department of Personnel Management and what prompted those changes to make the qualifications lesser than what it was? Was it because we didn't have enough applicants? But those are, those are the reasons why I'm asking the questions. And I did state how many applicants applied. Was it nobody that was interested that prompted for the job description to be given, I don't know, uh, education level change? Those are the questions I'm asking. I'm not necessarily asking about Title II or the authorities, but just the administrative process. Thank you.
So that's where I'm referencing back to Title II. Uh, it states clearly that the Office of Legislative Services handles either the selection or what, how the new director or interim director works with, uh, the legislative branch. So I, the Speaker, cannot call to make these types of changes because we try to eliminate even just the integrity of the office that it holds that we have to upkeep. So I did ask Ms. Johnson, who is our, our director within OLS, who has helped administrate the vacancy process. So I'll give her this time to address that point of order that was raised by Delegate
Okay. Thank you for your question, um, or all the questions that you raise. Um, I, I actually do understand where you're coming from with regards to how the whole hiring process, um, took place. If anything, as stated in my report, this position has been open for over four years with no, um, attempt to try to fill this, or, or well, there, there were numerous attempts that were done by the office itself. Advertised, they had individuals applied. I also applied numerous times and I was sent, I was told I was not qualified. So this position has been open for over four years. You had an interim director there who was managing that office. And, you know, and I had always had been communicating with him that I was interested in getting back in this position. So he was well aware of that, all the way up to about a year before I had gotten, a year ago. He had been, um, attempting to work with DPM to add the equivalency clause within the act, uh, the actual qualifications. He was in communication with me on that and stated that, that, that's what he was looking to do. For whatever reason, DPM just did not ever, uh, addressed that. They never did take that into consideration and it was just held back and held back and held back. Mr. Harrison, his primary goal was to ensure that, that operations would continue there. So he had been working on that all the way up to when he was going to leave. Yes, this position was advertised through DPM. I don't know if it was done by newspaper. I don't believe that that's required under law, but it was, it was advertised through DPM. My application was submitted to DPM. It was assessed by two individuals, um, within HR. My application packet went over to the, to the OLS Director, who has the outright authority to hire for that position. She made the offer, I accepted. So if anything, DPM was directly involved with this whole process. And by law, the Office of Legislative Services Director, um, executed her duties according to the law. And yes, the Speaker is correct with regards to that actual office. It's set up that, that way for a specific reason. At back, I understand that in the past, the position was where there had to be an appointment, then in a confirmation by council. But that changed out to ensure that, 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 that office, um, that council has at least an armed length distance away from that process itself and to ensure that that office can operate independently. So I did comply with all the actual processes of the actual, um, Navajo Nation, the laws. And so the, the, the whole process was done appropriately. It was, and to insinuate that it was not, really raises a lot of issues there. The actual administrative oversight falls to Ms. Johnson and our, 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 our oversight is the Law and Order Committee. I did present myself to them and I would be happy to share my credentials with you, if anything, but I would have to ask that, i- if anything, that that go into an executive session and we can have that discussion on everything. And yes, I have, in my whole career, I have supervised in numerous and countless positions, including the Ethics and Rules Office when I was acting as interim director. I was supervising that staff at least on two separate occasions. I also was the interim director for the, for the, um, for the Elections Administration, wherein I oversaw, I supervised that whole staff through the 2020, um, elections during the actual pandemic. I was supervisor when I was in my other positions, Chief Prosecutor in the, in the Musculara Apache Tribe. I also was Chief Public Defender in San Carlos, wherein I did, um, supervise staff there as well. And so I've had, I have acted in that, in supervisory positions, um, in, in most of my career. I, um, and I am, I am competent with regards to the work that has to be, be done. That the two other instances I went back as interim director, I hit the ground running. On the very first day on the 17th, I was already in the middle of cases. I'm in the middle of cases right now. I'm barred to practice law within the Navajo Nation and I'm moving with cases. I'm highly competent that I will be handling, um, all intakes, adjudications, what have you. We even have a case that's over with the Supreme Court right now. I've been doing researching and getting involved with that as well. I'm, I'm, I am competent. I don't see that there was any wrongdoing with regards to how the, um, position was filled. It was over four years that anyone could have probably stepped in. Counsel could have stepped in to try to change the laws to get someone appointed in there. And quite honestly, it was never done. Now you have a director now that wants, that wants to serve and now questions are, are being asked of me. So in all honesty, uh, that office is moving forward.
Point of order raised by Delegate Law.
Yes, Mr. Morris, I would just address your decorum. So council, we are here to ask questions. And so I don't appreciate that quick, that statement that you made and now we're asking questions. That's our job, sir. So just wanted to call that out as a point of order for decorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Law. And again, I think it does go both ways, colleagues. So, uh, Mr. Morris, if he can just directly address the questions. I know things may get a little personal or defensive, but if he can just stick clear just to the questions that were raised. Delegate Law?
Speaker, I don't know why you're saying personal. This is a job of where he's fulfilling duties for the Navajo Nation.
Delegate Law, I'm referring to him. I said, yes, he may make personal statements, but he has to address the questions clear just to the questions that you have asked without his personal input of how he's answering these questions. Just clear and direct to your questions. That's what I asked him to do. So Mr. Morris, if you can continue. Point of order raised by Delegate Simpson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker, Members of the Council. Good afternoon. We have this gentleman up here that's before us and I believe he just started a couple of weeks ago. The question, it does not state in this agenda that we have questions for, I mean, some of the questions will pertain to, will be going to the Speaker herself, Office of the State Council, then Department of Personal Management. So, Madam Speaker, I think you really need to make sure that the, the questions pertains to the director or the Office itself, Ethics and Rules. There's nothing that says but something that will need to be answered by the Speaker or Office of the State Services or Department of Personnel. If that's the case, that should have been put on the agenda. So to me, it really doesn't, it just says Ethics and Rules Office on the agenda. So I'm not sure what we're trying to get out of this, uh, report. But to me, I just, I thought we're just going to be the qualification of this individual and how, you know, his goals and objectives for the office was going to be about. But how he was, how he applied, how he selected, why was the job description, job description amended from the, from here and there? So that pertains to other individuals that can answer those questions. Right now, I think we want to hear what the individual is going to do, what individual is going to accomplish within the Office of, Office of Ethics and Rules. So, Madam Speaker, I ask you to make sure that this, this pertains to Ethics and Rules Office. Now, because right now, Office of the Speaker is not on the agenda, Office of the State Service is on the, and Department of Personal Management on the agenda. So, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Simpson, uh, for that point of order. And you are correct that we do only have the Ethics and Rules Office. But just out of courtesy for my colleagues that do have extending questions, at times we do, uh, have other presenters or agents come down to the floor. Uh, so I was just giving that courtesy to Delegate Law. But again, Delegate Law, there's that request from our colleagues if we can just stay on the topic of transitions or operations. But I just did have Ms. Johnson go down to the floor, just as a courtesy to answer some of these questions that you had. So, so it's not like I'm limiting any answers or departments. But also, Office of Legislative Council is also here if there are any concerns that do raise on personnel matters. So thank you again, Delegate Simpson. Again, just that reminder, colleagues, uh, just having that courtesy for, uh, the presenter that is here. Uh, so Mr. Morris?
Okay. Thank you for that, as well as you should. And also, um, Delegate, Honorable Delegate Claw, thank you again. I do apologize if, um, if anything, but, um, now going to some of the other things that you had requested or you asked of me. There was a question posed with regards to how white collar crimes is initiated. The Ethics and Rules Office does not deal with white collar crime cases. We deal, we, 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 um, take our cases through an administrative process. That whole process is an administrative process. It is not, um, as opposed to white collar crimes. White collar crimes deals with the, the Criminal Code, Title 17. So in regards to the initiation of a white collar crime case, um, the Ethics and Rules Office does not deal with white collar crimes. However, there is, um, there is an old agreement that the Ethics and Rules Office had with the Office of the Prosecutor, white collar crimes, um, wherein we have to work together because at times there are cases that either initiate in the, the criminal section or either with Ethics and Rules. And we have to determine as to whether the case will go forward via the, the Criminal Code or under the actual Ethics and Rules Code. And we have to work together. There's an MOU that was established years back. That's one of the things that I've, um, in, in the time that I've been back, that I've met with the, the, um, the Chief Prosecutor and the Office of the Auditor General. And, uh, they're calling it a three pillars agreement, to where the three of us will look to work together on that. So the Ethics and Rules does work closely with, um, with the Prosecutor's Office to address, um, to either refer cases over for white collar prosecution or they refer stuff over to us for the administrative process. So with, so that would answer, uh, the actual question regarding white collar crimes. Now with the, now with regard, you know, there was a lot of questions there. If I overs, if I do not answer something, please remind me on some of that, um, as far as what you're requesting of us. But as far as the actual cases itself and, um, a- as far as the intakes go, how that goes is when the intakes are filed with our office, the intakes first come will either come to myself or the presenting officer. We'll evaluate the case to determine as to whether, uh, whether it would be assigned for investigation, whether a preliminary inquiry will, um, take place to determine as to whether there's additional information that needs to be added to those specific cases itself or whether it gets assigned for investigations. Investigation does what they need to do and there, and we work closely with them. We guide them with regards to their investigations and we follow that all the way up to the point that i- if we do file. Now, understand, there are numerous ca, there are a lot of cases there that, that still need to be reviewed. That's stuff that I'm, I've been working on from day one. I've been devoting my time to, uh, looking at a lot of I've been devoting my time to, uh, looking at a lot of those intakes that, that were backlog. And again, those backlogs that were not intentional, as stated, the interim director had to select what cases he was gonna refer over to the contract attorney because he had limited funds for that. But now that I'm there and you have the presenting officer who are both barred, we will be taking on those responsibilities. That includes contacting the complaining parties to determine as to whether they, because there, you are correct, there are cases that have probably sat there even for a couple of years. I think the, the ones, I, I've even seen some cases that go back to 2022. I'm calling individuals to determine as to whether they wish to proceed with certain cases, and we involve them. And if anything, we are looking at all of that. So we're moving forward, and of course, we also have started our consultations for individuals as they come in now. I, I'm meeting with individuals, and so we have the new cases coming in that are filed daily, then we have the old backlog to look at. So it is a priority. Um, I have met with the, I, I, I've been doing case staffings with the individual investigators to look at their caseload, to determine as a, um, where they're at with regards to cases that have been assigned to them. They're updating me on that, um, if anything. They have been, um, I, I have met with the whole team. They know what direction that we are gonna be going. I have advised them that I'm still in the process of analyzing all the caseload and all, uh, everything that we still have there. Now, there also was questions as to how our team is working with the actual special prosecutor. Two investigators have been assigned, and they had been working, um, with regards to the investigations, assisting the special prosecutors. But what I had no notice on the first day was that, um, a majority of that work was being done, uh, through our office and without really the guidance with the special prosecutor. The special prosecutor under the law has the authority to guide his, his case as he sees fit. There was, um, I, I did not see that there was clear guidance there. So yes, I, I pulled our investigators back on those cases until I had a clear briefing with, uh, the, the investigators on how far they were or what work that has been done. I also requested for a briefing with the special prosecutors itself. We do, um, Chief Legislative Council also did attend a brief meeting right when I had started, and we both agreed that the, that, that the special prosecutor has their own process. And in my opinion, they are the ones that are getting paid to do that work. So I pulled the investigators back. We have many cases that we still need to see to, so, and I, but we've, but I've since met with the special prosecutors or investigators, and I'm committed to working with them. If they need anything from our staff to locate witnesses, set up interviews, to gather additional evidence or what have you, I, I'm committed to working with them. However, the chain of command has been reestablished where it will have to go through myself and then to the investigators. Before that, the investigators were just sort of, um, they were out doing the investigation. And to my knowledge, there was over eighty interviews that they completed and countless documents that were attained. I had specific concerns with regards to that process as there could be legal implications there, because when an ethics investigator is investigating a case, they are looking to, um, to, they attain records, they do interviews that will hold up for an actual administrative process. And if those, the same evidence or the interviews are to be used in a criminal process, there's a different procedure as to how you collect evidence and how you, um, uh, give rights to individuals you're interviewing. So that was the reason they were pulled back on that. But we're still committed to working with the, with the special prosecutors at this point, and I've been in communication with Mr. Nayback. In fact, uh, we're, we're doing that by email now. So we are still working closely with them with regards to those investigations. We are also identifying cases that were filed that may pertain to their cases, and we're referring that over to them. And we've also been working to address certain cases. Not every ethics intake that come in has to go through the full process for adjudication. At times, what it requires is for us to even go out in, in, in the field and to even, um, to not, to, to actually meet with individuals, to get individuals to agree to work together. Because the majority of the, the issues that come through that office are issues that, that could be resolved between officials and staff members from chapters, and so, so we look at all that. Now, understand that the Ethics and Rules Office can mediate those types of situations on up into actual reprimands of, of, uh, government officials, on up all the way up to removal, to putting fines on individuals as well. So if anything, we, we do have those authorities. One of the things I, I'm actually, that I've noticed with regards to cases going through the Office of Hearings and Appeals as well, is that they're looking, there, there's a lot of times that legal counsel bring civil procedures into that, um, administrative, um, process. And quite honestly, your administrative processes are supposed to take place quickly. If you look at the law, the code, it requires that we have these hearings within thirty days after we file. But now we're looking at cases that run over a year, going into two years, and that delays these, the, the, these cases from being adjudicated quickly. Administrative hearings are supposed to happen in a, in a, in a quicker, um, process, if anything. So, um, I think if there's anything that I did not answer for you, please, uh, remind me.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. I'm gonna go over to Jalissa to briefly go over some of the process that took place to fill the position.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Navajia Tik Committee. She had Jalissa Johnson, you know, she, uh, she had the shenkiyani, but she's changed over the chayhanaga, you know, the shanale. Uh, thank you for the request for the report and the questions. Um, since I was appointed back in October 2023, I've been working with, uh, the, at the time, interim, uh, Director of Ethics and Rules, Mr. Lunell Harrison. And for the past two years, we've been trying to work with, um, the Department of Personnel Management as well as the Director of the Division of Human Resources. So, um, there were several, not several, but there were attempts to, um, amend the qualifications of the director position, and a PCQ has been submitted, but, um, to my understanding, there was never a response received back, or it was either denied. So, uh, we did, let's see, one, I made two attempts to make the, to amend the PCQ for the position, and both times I never received a response, uh, from the Director of Personnel Management. So from there, um, we tried advertising the position. We did receive applications, however, um, several were deemed unqualified. Um, and we did receive one, but that person, um, didn't take the position. So we ended up having to readvertise and constantly kept trying to work with, uh, DPM on the position. And it was announced that Mr. Harrison was gonna retire, and I didn't think he was gonna do it too soon, but, um, so we made it our goal to find someone who was qualified. And this position, um, did receive one applicant who did qualify, but they weren't barred. So we had to go back and work with DPM, and we did let them know that it is, uh, by code that they have to be barred. And, um, so we made it, we had several meetings, um, readvertising several times, and finally, we did meet with, um, Mr. Sita Tati. And by the recommendation, we did change the PCQ, and the only thing that was included in the PCQ, the, the only thing that was amended was to include the equivalency clause. None of, none of the education, educational requirements, none of the requirements, not even the bar, was deleted, nothing was changed, except an addition was equivalency clause, which would deem Mr. Morris, um, qualified. So that's how we, um, that came about, and we offered him the position and he, um, took it. But, uh, through Mr. Harrison's initiative, we did get that, um, completed before he did retire. And for a short period, we had, uh, I just, we had just had to appoint an interim director. Um, I believe that addresses the process of the PCQ. And I stand for any other questions that you have, um, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson, uh, for reviewing how the position was filled, and also thank you, Mr. Morris, for answering a lot of those questions. Uh, we will move forward with, uh, questions. Uh, Delegate Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, do, good on, good on, Mr. Morris. Uh, in your statement that you have passion, that you have passion for Navajo people, that's why you came back. Uh, you see, the Navajo people, you know, you, you, you have that passion for Navajo people. Uh, and, uh, you, you mentioned in your, in your statement that, you know, you were there before, you worked for the Navajo Nation. Uh, you came back, you know, it, it is hard work. It is hard work being a director. So I do commend you for coming back. Uh, do, and, uh, I just have one question and some comments. And I did hear that you have over two hundred plus, I guess you could call it backlog or current, current cases that are on the books. So I guess my question, you know, we always hear backlogs from judicial branch, we always hear backlogs from hearings and appeal. Uh, so, you know, you have over two hundred, I guess my question on that one would be, what is your plan? What is your plan? Uh, though, you know, a lot of times, there's lack of staffing that usually creates backlog at your department. I don't know if you need additional staffing like, like you stated, it will seize your oversight. So I, I guess now might be the time if, if staffing is needed. But then again, it's, it's the hiring process that we have to go through. By the time you hire a person, you know, it's well within the physical year. Uh, it's not a physical year, nah, it's good. Uh, though, and the, the other one that I heard is that you're barred. You're barred, and the previous director wasn't barred. So as, as a, um, as a barred director, I guess, some of those, um, some of those cases might be handled by yourself rather than another attorney. So, so I guess, um, the, the question, what is your goal? What is your plan? Uh, though the other one that I heard is the three pillars, the, which is Ethics and Rule, Hearings and Appeal, and then Office of the Prosecutor. I think the fourth one might be Office of Auditor General. I don't know if they're somewhere in your, 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 your pillars. So, you know, there's, there's, um, any time that there's, um, issues at the chapter, a, a, uh, Auditor General is usually the lead person in doing a lot of these, um, cases. So I don't know if that's, that's part of, part of the pillars to your, to, to. So, you know, coming back from Elamo, that's a long drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Mitchell, and then gonna go next to Delegate Toth.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, Mr. Morris, I just want to identify myself or introduce myself. My name is George Toth from Eastern. Back in nineteen ninety-five to oh-three, I've been with Ethics and Rules, and I was the Chair of the Committee. We have all the personnel in place. We, uh, release a lot of, uh, employees, elected official, having here every other week. Then we have a good investigator when they have problems with it. So that's where the problem is. We don't have the Ethics and Rules Committee right now. That's why you're running into a lot of these cases. Uh, Speaker, how this procedure was done? This vacancy announcement, a job description was announced so many months, years, nobody qualified, no. So a new one came out, I don't know who came out the new one, that should have been advertised at least for thirty days. The question I have, something's going on right here. It bothers me how we supposed to say, us, every day, follow the law, follow the rules and regulations. We just can't jump, jump. Something's going on here. Director, former director left within no time change was made. It should take, um, even three months to fill that position. So I'm not satisfied with the selection here and the qualification, I haven't seen it. So I'm gonna make it direct if, uh, this is a crucial, uh, position, very important position, that needs to be looked into. I'm just hoping that Speaker and your staff are not involved some type of breaking the rules. So, but what I'd like to see is within thirty days, how this selection was made, who was involved, was to advertise, be, let's see the evidence, and then we need to talk to personnel, Ms. Tati. She probably have a reason that's why she didn't want to advertise. So those things, I, I'm worried about it, Speaker, out of Mr. Morris, out of your staff, even our attorney. We supposed to follow the rules how we hire people. Uh, taking the shortcut is gonna hurt us. One thing I'm worrying about is Mr., uh, what's his name, Mr. Harrison left. We have a good information, now he comes in, I guarantee that Mr. Morris has already communicated with special prosecutor, he's gonna try and just short, take shortcut. He's gonna probably interfere. He's not gonna tell us. So I request that within thirty days, Speaker, to have your staff in written format, who was involved, what qualification. I'd like to see the old, uh, job description and then the new one, and who was all involved. It bothers me right now as a counsel, because we should be honest, we should follow the rules, even the attorney needs to do that. All of us, accountability. So we shouldn't be doing this. So if it's wrong, let's go ahead and admit that, you know? It's, something's, I mean, it was so fast, the changeover took place. Look at all the position that we have with Navajo Nation, it takes forever to fill that position, even high position. That's the question I have, man, uh, Madam, uh, Speaker. I hate to say this, because I'm doing for my people, I'm doing for all of you, that we shouldn't take shortcut. I don't want to beat the blame, I want to do it right. So I know what it takes to be a director. And I've been there eight years. So I'm not what I'm talking about. So being ethical, being honest, you have to be honest to be a director and also the committee. You have to be honest to be a director and also the committee. Speaker, I hate to put this in that format that I request that be done within 30 days in written information within 30 days. Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Delegate Toth, for that directive. Again, colleagues, myself, the Speaker, Office of the Speaker was not involved with the hiring of the Dununu Director, titled to the say that that direction is underneath OLS, even though it is a personnel matter. So I'll have them work with Chief Legislative Counsel. And then Ms. Johnson can work with our attorneys to provide that report, even in the memo format. So again, colleagues, the only direction that I do give, I know many of our legislative departments are independent. Many of them have commissions or boards on their own. However, the only oversight administratively is really watching the budget, helping them prepare the budget, preparing to amend plans of operations. So it does get a little bit confusing. I know it's legislative branch is structured a little bit differently than executive branch. So we'll work with Mr., not Mr. Morris, but Ms. Johnson and also CLC if you could provide that legal guidance since it is a personnel matter. So we'll prepare that as well. And there was a motion for a directive, Office of Legislative Counsel. So attorneys are going to need a few minutes to provide that finalized language. All right, colleagues, staff did notify me that we don't have all of the members for a quorum that's on the floor. So I'm going to call another roll call. So the board is active. Okay, so our roll call attended, we here gave us a thumbs up. So we do have, still have quorum of two committee rule. So Chief Legislative Counsel is still drafting the directive. Delegate Toth, it will be sent to you. If you could concur with that language through Kristin. All right, so Ms. Johnson, if you could help read that directive language into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Directive, the Executive Director of the Office of Legislative Services shall disclose to the NABI committee the hiring process and procedures related to hiring the Ethics and Rules Director. This shall be provided to the committee in written format within 30 days. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And that was a motion by Delegate Toth. Is there a second? Second by Delegate Toth? And thank you, staff, for reading that. We do have a motion and a second. Colleagues, are there any questions? And Q, Delegate Toth?
Yes, Madam Chair. I did send questions that I would like answered, and that would be part of the procedures that is outlined there within the directive. I'd also like to add that we would have Ms. Resita Totti added in to give a report with that written format. So I don't know if I can just get an acknowledgement from our Legislative Counsel that she did receive the questions that I would like answered. And this is in regards to the process as well.
Thank you, Delegate Toth. And going over to OLC.
Thank you, Speaker. So regards to the questions, you can, they can be added to the directive. That you can request the motioning party modify the directive to add them to the current directive. I'm just looking through this. NABI does not have direct oversight of DPM. So this directive can and should be issued to the Executive Director of Office of Legislative Services. And then that individual can provide the process. And they can also comment on how they worked with DPM to make any revisions or updates to the qualifications. I don't have any issues with the questions. Well, maybe just one. But DPM, again, NABI doesn't have direct oversight over DPM. Speaker.
Okay. Chief or Office of Legislative Counsel, there still has additional issues with the questions. So Office of Legislative Counsel?
I recommend taking out question 15. Other than that, the question should be directed to Ms. Johnson, the Executive Director of the Office of Legislative Services. Speaker.
So Delegate Toth, per Office of Legislative Counsel, 15 would be out of the scope of what is being directed. Delegate Toth?
Thank you, Speaker. And I would also like to add in here, we did hear from Shana that we want to also see the documentation for the whole process. So meaning when it first started, so all that documentation. So we're not just going to hear about the process and procedure, but we want to see the exhibits and the documentation as well. And I want that to be modified on the motion for the directive. So I request that from Honorable Toth, if we can add that in.
And we do have concurrence from Delegate Toth. And since Delegate Toth was the seconding party, so I'm pretty sure she concurs. So we will put that, we did put a modified motion for the directive on the board. And colleagues, are there any other additional questions or comments? Second call and third call. Two minutes on the board, colleagues, for the directive. Vice Chair Johnson, how do you vote? Vote screen. And we do have a vote of 10 in favors. There were opposed with chaired out voting. Motion does carry for the directive. And going back to the main motion of our report, Delegate, oh, is it that renewed? Okay. Delegate Toth with follow-up questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I did ask you, Mr. Morris, what your, do you have any degrees, licencers, or certifications? That never got answered. So if you could go ahead and share that with us. And then I do express my same sentiment as Delegate Toth. So I just find it very ironic that we are aiding and abetting in hypocrisy if we are not following the laws and being unethical in the hiring practices that are set forth by Navajo Nation code. And we're putting that in the Office of Ethics and Rules. So for me, it does not sit well as well. It's just, you know, very disturbing. In addition to that, I want to go back to what was stated, that the job was offered to you. And, you know, it does seem like what you said, four years. Now you know where our concern is coming from. For four years, a person occupied this position in interim, you know, position as a director. Maybe he did not want to advertise because he wanted to remain in that position. Maybe there wasn't a push because they wanted to, you know, just maintain status quo. And then all of a sudden, when he's retiring, we automatically find someone while that position was vacant for four years. And so I think I do see Delegate Toth's concern, and that's where I'm coming from too. And, you know, I agree, we should have that equity to where people off the reservation, people on the reservation, people with, you know, their Navajo Nation bar license should be able to apply. And there should be a good pool of applicants. So the way it sounds is the job was offered to you, and that's what you mentioned here. How that process went, you know, I think does need to be looked into. And therefore, we will wait for that directive to follow through. Because if it's not in compliance, then it would be deemed out of order. And so I just also want to know what your environment is at your current office. If we were to ask the staff how the transition is going, what would they rate that as? Have you been meeting with them? And, you know, just speaking from what we are experiencing, oftentimes when a director comes in, and I understand there's different levels of leadership, but when they go in, there's some that are, you know, micromanagers. There's some that are able to mediate with their team, facilitate teams. And so that's where, you know, our concern is as well. And I think because we didn't give the employees an opportunity to really get a fair pool of applicants, did we just push them into accepting someone? And I don't want... And I don't want, you know, the, these employees to think that it was us as council, because we didn't know the process, or we didn't know the steps that were being taken. And I think although it is a personnel issue, again, this falls under the whole Navajo Nation, because Ethics and Rules, as you mentioned, goes to elected officials, regular tribal employees, even like certain other incidents that occur on the Navajo Nation. So it does have a wide net of activities, and that's why we feel very important. And although, you know, there was a comment made that that should be just the Legislative, Office of Legislative Services, that's a separate discussion, I disagree, because it's all one process, a hiring process for a position within the legislative branch, that's all one process. And so we're, we're just trying to understand if we did do our due diligence in getting the position filled. You spoke about the three pillars, and now that has prompted interest, because now we do have the special prosecutor, and now we have the Attorney General. You know that we did have a special counsel session where this counsel unanimously voted to unconfirm Mr. Beecher. Not, within 15 minutes, we received an email from the President reappointing him to that same position. And again, where is the ethical integrity of these individuals? If a person didn't get confirmed, I don't know who has the audacity to remain in that position when they've been voted out, and we each carry, you know, hundreds of people that we represent, and for them not to respect that process, or for them to undermine the people's votes, you know, that's just very discouraging. So you mentioned that, so we have the AG, the ERO, and you have the prosecutor. So based on that, you did state you're working with the three pillars, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. And the reason why I asked about white collar crimes was you brought that up in your presentation. And then to hear that, you know, this is a different process, I do appreciate you explaining that, and so, you know, I, that's why I questioned you on that one. The other part that you did mention was that these positions that are currently there, they're working with the special prosecutor, but you've pulled them back, and that you are looking at the intake that was done, which would consist of the interviews and all of that. So going forward, do you have a plan of how that's going to be moving, since you did an assessment, it sounds like? And then what is your timeframe of when that's going to be completed? Because we have constituents that we have to answer to, and they're keenly interested in what is happening with our Navajo Nation government. A big part of that falls upon the Navajo Nation Ethics and Rules, because you're almost like the hub of it, where you get the information, you disseminate it, you work with other outside entities, you give them information. So in order to move that forward, we really do need a good transition, and that's what I want to ensure and to hear from you, is that you will allow for that, and that you, as the director, because most times what I've seen in this Navajo Nation government is that directors become a hindrance, they become the obstacle, they become the obstructionist to productivity and for our Navajo Nation actually doing transparency, because they begin to micromanage, because they start to, you know, say that they're the supervisor and it's this way, but when the employees begin to voice their concerns, or try to explain the work that they're doing, we're hearing about retaliation, and that's one thing that I hope we're not going to hear about, because it is important, and your role as a director is very important. And then also, you know, we talk about unconfirmed positions, and we still have some here in our legislative branch. When are we going to address that? You know, we hold these high standards for people across the street, but we let that sit to the wayside here within our own branch, and I think we do need to call attention to that, because that's one of the things that is flawed with our Navajo Nation government. When you're sitting there and you're pointing fingers, two fingers point back to you. So we do need to be very adamant about change and transparency, but we also need to clean our own house, as Shana mentioned, because when you have something that's not going the way it's supposed to, which is following the Navajo Nation law, it makes all of us look bad. If we don't speak up against it, then we're complacent, and we're held to that standard. But some of us are speaking up, and we do want things to be done the right way. So I want to acknowledge Honorable George Tolt, thank you for your honesty, thank you for putting that out there to our people, because they deserve to hear the truth, and sometimes people don't like that. And, you know, oftentimes, and who knows, maybe George and I are going to be targeted, and we might be investigated here, but I hope not, because that's what I'm talking about, retaliation. When you just ask questions and you want the truth, you know, the sad fact is that people start to target you, they start to look at you, and so I hope that you are a true professional.
Thank you, colleagues. I did get a note from staff, I think we really, we lost quorum. So just doing a staff, if you can do a quick roll call? So colleagues, we did break quorum for our two-committee rule. We've been operating on two-committee rule for a few hours now, so we don't have one full committee that is here. So colleagues, we did lose quorum here at 3:25 PM. Again, thank you, Mr. Morris, for being here, and we'll be looking forward to that written report to the committee. So it's nice to meet you, finally to meet you, sorry it's been a busy month, but I have not got a chance to meet with you, so welcome to the legislative branch. Delegate Daniels, before you leave, we have, I know not everyone is here, a few delegates of us are still here, I wanted to bring out Kodo Shama Aida, she is retiring the end of this month, so this will be her last Nauvoo Kiyatik Committee meeting. I know we, I did ask her that we would host a retirement party, but due to all the budget issues going on right now, we'll probably have to call her on till later on within the year, or do some type of recognition for her. So she has spent many years working for the Navajo Nation, either within the government or in other capacities on the Navajo Nation. I know she has many work experience in Chinli as well, so within parks, so it's been, and she has helped me very, so much, too, when I was Miss Navajo, and she is like a mom to me as well, but it's very, it's, it's good to see her, that she's moving on to her livelihood, her grandkids, and I know this was a very hard, hard decision for her, but we are very grateful for you, Shama. I, myself personally, for many years that I have known you, and you never said no to us, you made sure that we were warm, or cool, and fed, and cleaned at times, so if you could help me join. Aida, I know it's a very emotional day, and we were just talking about it earlier, I was like, oh no, this is her last Nauvoo Kiyatik Committee meeting, so hopefully another person will be coming in, hopefully she's as much as loving and caring as you are, Shama. Shama, if you can join me down here, we want to give you, at least before we officially leave, for your last Nauvoo Kiyatik Committee meeting.